But once that first, second half goal was scored, they sparked and they doubled down. And the girls just went out and executed and found a way to get it done to win the game. All of their goals were scored in the second half to win that game. And it was back and forth with Wheaton. So congratulations to our Manio Girls Soccer Team for winning that state championship. Unbelievable. If you recall, I've got the soccer ball in my office upstairs. The men's 2016 won the state championship. So maybe the girls will give us a signed ball.
Well, maybe we should make sure we have something to recognize.
That's exactly right.
That's right. That's right.
So we'll reach out to the coach and them and see if we can... Irvin, you can get him here.
I can.
Since he works with you. So we'll get the ladies here so we can recognize them at our July meeting. And then the last thing I have, another just phenomenal notice of our youth in our community is the First Flight Schools Hunter, Safety, and Shooting. And I'm going to welcome a few of them here this morning along with coaches and members of that team. That particular, that group is a team of boys and girls with all skill levels and their grades six to 12. And they offer a safe and fun environment for young people to involve, improve their skills while also learning about sportsmanship, discipline, and teamwork, and building self-confidence. Back in March of this year, the shooting team of those young folks split into three groups to participate in the 2023 district tournament that was held at the 4H Center in Columbia. Approximately 20 members completed rifle, shotgun, and archery competition. The high school senior blue team placed third overall with a score of 3,301 points out of a possible 4,000 points. They scored first place in the shotgun discipline and third in the rifle discipline. There were three members who had perfect scores of 20 in the senior shotgun discipline, which enabled them to advance to shoot doubles in the tournament. Vice Chairman, you can relate to all of this because you go to the rifle range, shooting range, and also you can relate to that's pretty incredible scores to be able to do that as a youth. What an achievement. Certainly hats off to all of the youth for their hard work and dedication. And certainly a huge thank you goes to the coaches who teach these young people the valuable skills. And of course, they will last a lifetime. Coaches include Ralph Jarvis, Sam Ballard, Steve Hoffman, Eric Feewachs, Jimmy Pierce. Jimmy's here this morning. Frank Repke. He's shotgun and hunter skills. Matthew Shealy, archery. LaSara, and I'm going to massacre her last name. How do you say it, Jimmy?
Nadalde.
Nadalde, okay. For hunter skills. And Kelly Crawford. So let's just have a round of applause for these youth. Jimmy, I'll ask you to come forward and take a minute to have your folks turn around, introduce them, and share them with the crowd with us this morning.
Yes, sir. Thank you for allowing us to be here and for recognizing us. It means a lot to us and our team. Mr. Sam Ballard's here to my right. He is, he has been the ringleader, still is the ringleader. He's kind of backing off a little bit, but he's the one that's kept this program going through the years, long before I was even involved with it. This is Ethan Crowe. He was one of our shotgun shooters here. This is Emmett Bumgardner. He was one of our middle schooler students. Eric Feewachs, who was one of our rifle coaches. And Anna Barbosa is a wildlife officer. Without the Wildlife Commission, this couldn't be possible because they spearhead and promote and handle the whole competition district and on the state level. And we thank Anna here this morning. We have Coach Frank Repke. He's in the second row. And I don't think I missed anybody. I don't think I have anybody else here. I tried to have most of the team members here, but unfortunately with final exams and senior graduation practice, I kind of was running against a stone wall. But I wanted to go ahead and try to get it on the agenda if I could. And our team, they did quite well at the competition this year. I was very proud of them, especially the shotgun team. I'm the shotgun coach, so I was very, very proud, to say the least, that I had three that shot perfect scores in the shotgun. And we appreciate y'all's support. And I know y'all are supporters of the Second Amendment. Without that, this wouldn't be possible also. But I just want to say thank you to all of y'all.
Thank you, Jimmy. Let's have them stand up. Come on up in front of the podium. And let's have y'all turn around so the audience can see you. Coaches.
Coaches, yeah. Come on.
Coaches as well. And we'll get a picture of you.
You actually might come around to the commissioner's.
Okay.
It's probably good for the commissioners to stand.
Do you want the commissioners to stand?
Let's stand, y'all. Come on.
Yeah.
Steve House is a spunky one.
That brings us to item three on the budget, which is service pins. And I believe this morning we have a recipient. Ms. Julie Anderson will be receiving her 20-year pin from Ms. Jenny Collins. Jenny? Hope that wasn't a surprise.
While we're young.
Julie, come on forward here.
Good morning.
Come on, Julie.
Chairman, Commissioners. This is Captain Julie Anderson. And Julie is our best accidental EMT, as we call her that.
Accidental EMT?
Accidental EMT. Because in 2002, Julie wanted to take a CPR class. And she went and signed up for it, but she mistakenly signed up for an EMT class. So she decided to stick it out and complete it. And she was done in February of '03. She volunteered with Dare County EMS for a few months and then got hired on in June. In 2005, she advanced her certification to the EMT intermediate. 2008, paramedic. 2015, she was promoted to lieutenant. And 2017, she was promoted to captain. And she's currently our shift commander for seashift. She's received several awards through her tenure, including, in 2006, was the county employee of the month. 2007, a peer award. 2008, a director's award. And 2022, a merit award from the department. She teaches classes for us, various classes that, especially in our officer corps group. She's an assessor in our hiring and promotional practices. And she has some ancillary duties that she does for the department. She used to order supplies, and she had the supply responsibility when COVID started. And without her efforts, we never ran out of masks or gloves all through the COVID time period when many other people were scrambling. Julie made sure that she had enough suppliers that we could get all of our supplies. She currently, she is our special event coordinator. So all those things like the seafood festival, Dare Days, Kids Fest, she's the one that works with all the event organizers to make sure that we have crews there. And she's the champion of our breast cancer fundraising events in every October. So Julie, thank you very much for 20 years of dedicated service. We appreciate it.
I don't think we have any other service pins this morning, but we do have employee of the month for the month of June. And I will ask Mr. Dave Clausen if he'd come forward with that.
We have one for May as well.
About May.
May and June.
Yep. This is for June. May's not here.
Yes, it is. Month of May will be presented by Jenny Collins.
I'm sorry. We'll go back to May. My apologies, I overlooked that. Dave, come on up. We'll do June. Since it's June, we'll do June, and then we'll go back to May. Sorry I missed that, folks. I'm going to call on you again, Jenny.
He was talking about his wife, Gadd. I bet that's a surprise, isn't it, to Mr. Dustin? Yes, sir. Wow. Well, I got several nominations, and I couldn't make anything up as well as what's in these nominations. And they're from all different departments. The first one says nominating Dustin because it's underestimated how tough his job is. He has to work with so many vendors and contractors and coordinate all those projects while having to answer to the deputy manager, the manager, and the board. He's always able to help when I have a question about something and always reaches out when he has a question, which is not what something that everyone does. His general positive demeanor and actual interest in his fellow employees make him a delight to work with. And the next one, and she'll smile. Dustin does a wonderful job of handling whatever's thrown at him. Is never too small or large and often not in his job description. And since the county manager's not here, I'm going to say that if it remotely resembles a project and it doesn't have a home, he's the home every time. He's not afraid to let you know that he doesn't know something, but he always, always will either find out an answer or help you find someone that does. The best part is he always does it with a smile and much-needed humor so that a task is not a task, but an opportunity for growth. You all know the project side. He's learned that so well, and thank goodness, taken it over from me. And you know, we've got three large ones going on right now, and I cannot imagine how much time and work that takes. In his spare time, you know, he does all our purchasing, which is something 10, 15 years ago took three people to do. Connected to that is the procurement side, which has gotten more and more and more complicated. Now we have federal uniform guidance, which he was part of our COVID team because we claimed a lot from FEMA. And then with a storm or a disaster, those rules are so stringent and so complicated. And they're not the same as the state rules. And he knows as much as anybody in the state of North Carolina. The thing about the projects is he deals with stuff every single day. There's always a problem. There'll be something going on with a contractor and a project every day. And he never fails to come to me. And usually I find out about things after the fact because it's already been solved. And I find out what happened, why it happened, and what the solution is. So it's minimizing my time, it minimizes Bobby's time, and it's minimizing your time. And he does a great job.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I greatly appreciate it.
Dustin Peel, everyone. And hang on a minute, Dustin.
Yes, sir.
This is one of the best moves our board ever made when we tried to take some of that work off of Dave and Bobby's lap, especially special projects. And what brought it to light was incredible job you did with COA and Barn Hill and all of that work. And this board recognized that, and we put that extra monkey on your back to do special projects. And you've just done a phenomenal job. I've worked with him probably closer, more closer than the rest of the board on special projects. But anytime, I'll give a perfect example, was First Flight ball fields. You know, I met with those leadership out there, and we never really had a memorandum of understanding what their responsibilities were, what ours were. And I brought to the board some needed, much-needed repairs to the tune of about $65,000, $70,000. Dustin oversaw that. He made sure it was done, and he made sure it was done on time. I even went out there behind the scenes just to double-check, and he was on top of it before I could even get back to him and say, hey, Dustin, what about? Perfect example is they didn't finish painting the dugouts. And I got back to Dustin. He said, we got it covered, Bob. They know that. They're going to do it. But he had already spoken to them. So that ball field out there, Field One and Field Two, both are in excellent shape now. And thanks to Dustin spearheading that, has just done a tremendous job. And I commend you, Dustin, for always working closely with me on those special projects. And that's just one of many that you're working on. And this board couldn't be more pleased with what you do for us. And I want to personally say that publicly, and thank you for all of that. I missed him and his wife, my wife, and my two sons were at a Deadhead concert Thursday night, and I understand Dustin's wife...
Excuse me. Were you aware, Mr. Chairman?
Understand Dustin's wife is a Deadhead, so we didn't see him there, but we were in Raleigh at a Grateful Dead concert. One of my first, believe me. But one of my son's 300th, it was his 300th Grateful Dead concert. So I had to see what that was all about. And trust me, it was quite an experience. Sorry we missed you there, Dustin. But anyhow, thank you for what you do.
Thank you, Dustin. I appreciate it, and this is such an honor. I appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you, Dustin.
All right, Jenny, sorry I overlooked you on May, but come on back up here. Ms. Collins?
Thank you very much.
For the May employee of the month.
You know, I'm very fortunate to have a department full of staff that are very hard workers and do a tremendous job in making sure we meet our mission every day. I have two personnel that are primary administrative jobs. Both of them perform very different duties, but keep our department running as a well-oiled machine. And I'd like to introduce one of those folks now, Ms. Carleen Darcy. We call her Carly Awesome. She's an incredible hard worker. She was nominated by staff members for everything that she does for all the employees. You talk about an ironclad work ethic. She has one. She's self-motivated. She has incredible attention to detail. She's skilled at both independent and collaborative work. She's an excellent communicator, responds to everybody's needs as soon as possible, and she never makes it. And many times you can interrupt her today, you never feel like it's an inconvenience to her. Beyond supporting staff and her traditional duties as an administrative assistant of correspondences and meeting minutes and organizing files, she sets priorities and navigates the day very well for all of us. A great cat herder, as I call. She herds up all our candidates that are coming through for hiring interviews, assessors for hiring and promotional process. She develops our base schedule using one of our software programs. We have four, five shifts through the department of various different things. And she does that base scheduling, setting it up, freeing up, like the shift commanders, from not having to do that all the time. She works with the College of Alamoore to schedule college students and their clinical time, who ride along with us gaining field experience. She reviews time clock records. She'll take her computer home on the weekend, the laptop home, so that she can start working on time clock record and reconciliation through the weekend before the Monday morning payroll is due. It's a huge task for the many multiple shifts and to catch the nuances when somebody's made a mistake in their entries. She assists employees with their leave request. Again, simple keystroke mistakes of 7:00 a.m. instead of 7:00 p.m. can mean a big difference, and she catches all those things. She notifies HR when we have employees that are out and they may need FMLA. Keeps me up to date on significant events that are going on with the personnel. She supports all the staff, but you know, there's myself, two deputy chiefs, a chief pilot, numerous captains and lieutenants that she's supporting, all of their proofreading correspondences, editing, our webpage items she works on. She supports the two medical directors and their office time scheduling and the administrative tasks that she has or that they have with our personnel. I do a monthly teleconference, done it for the last couple of years with the entire department. And in the beginning of the teleconference, waiting for it to get started, we do a PowerPoint. She floods that thing with current events, birthdays and things like that, just to make sure everybody is included. Basically, she's the end of the funnel for all that information gathering up. When we hire new people, she's in there working with them, teaching them how to do time clock or ESO scheduling, NeoGov to get in and do evaluations and training. She also goes out to work sites. Since not everybody can be at Station One, if there is a need, she will go out to their work site. Greeting everybody that comes to Station One is a steady stream. We have a doorbell, and it's, she gets her steps through the day of up and down getting that door. She's very flexible. She'll tackle any issue to smooth out the process. And one of the things that you don't find a lot of administrative folks helping out with is recruitment. Carly worked with the Public Relations Department and redesigned our postcard with a QR code on it so that when we're at conferences or meetings, that people can just scan it, take them right to our website, to what jobs are being advertised. And that was all her doing. We have one of the best recruitment booth displays that is incredible and, you know, with her effort to doing that. The reason we're here in June to do her May recognition is because she was in Greensboro with me at the North Carolina Office of EMS Expo. And she was in our recruitment booth working that. So she's not EMS certified, but she knows an awful lot with the department, the years that she's been to be able to answer questions. And it's a tremendous resource for us. Always upbeat and positive. She'll make the grumpiest person grin. And I always get lots of compliments from other departments about how joyful she is to work with and how much a pleasure. So she may be behind the scenes, but she's vital to a success of our department, and she's adored and well-respected. So Carly Awesome, thank you for employee of the month. Put that on your back.
Thank you.
That completes our April service pins and our employee of the month for May and June. There was one other employee. David Overton was to receive a 10-year pin, but he wasn't able to be with us this morning. For those of you that have received the service pin and the employee of the month, if you'll step outside, we'll get some photographs. So we'll give a few minutes to clear the room before we move to the next agenda item. All right, ladies and gentlemen, now is the time for public comment. If you have public comment with respect to the budget, we will have that at the next item. This first public comment is for any other item that you may be concerned with or have interest in. And at this time, I have a sign-up sheet, and I'll ask Janice Booth if she will come forward. Ms. Booth, welcome this morning.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the opportunity to address the board today. I first came to the Outer Banks in 1977 on Thanksgiving with my then-boyfriend, future-husband, Richard Booth. The only thing open was Buck's Bait and Tackle. His mother, Mavis Ray Booth, had played Queen Elizabeth twice in the colony and taught dance to cast members. Richard was also once a tech at the lost colony. While she was creating the dance program at ECU, Mavis bought and was, bought what was once the Manio Baptist Church, which had been moved to the current site and then had become Vivian's House of Gifts. We all knew how unique the Outer Banks was. When Mavis sold the house, we were all deeply saddened. We bought it back eight years ago and have lived there ever since. However, the changes in the Outer Banks have not all been good. First, the science. Geologically, the Outer Banks is sinking. The seas are rising. Houses keep falling into the ocean. National newspapers are doing stories on our houses washing away. After storms, heavy equipment has to move huge piles of sand off roads. It doesn't even take a big storm to cause flooding in Wan Chee's and other places. When you look at the Outer Banks on a map, we are a very fragile strip of land poking out into the ocean. Beyond the geological, Richard worked at ACE for the last six years, and I did as well at Mackey's Ferry Pinos in Manio. We have talked with locals and thousands of tourists. They tell us that the Jersey Shore has been overdeveloped, so they come here. And the Maryland Shore, and Virginia Beach, and on and on. But we are doing the same thing here. People come here to enjoy what we have, but then they want all of the stores, restaurants, and services they had elsewhere. Money talks, and locals are ignored. Downtown Manio still does not have enough parking, and the new hotel has not increased parking or even attempted to look like part of the town at all. People who live in the town have to deal with blocks and blocks of parked cars and traffic jams daily. Now, developing Wan Chee's is an issue. We don't have infrastructure to accept more people. Access to Wan Chee's is a two-lane road. Traffic could be a huge problem. Wan Chee's is subject to flooding. What about waste treatment when that happens? You can't keep it away completely. And evacuation routes? What will stop buyers doing Airbnb? We will have tons of strangers in a quiet little town. Who will police it if they promise not to do Airbnb and do it anyway? This is not just a local house here and there. It is like those huge houses on the beach that now you're going to build in the midst of a small neighborhood. The people who live there will see the quality of their life ruined so business can make more money. When I lived on Long Island, I saw that with more development and more people came more drugs and more crime. The Board of Commissioners needs to consider the welfare of all the people who live here. We have already reached the point where people who work here can't afford to live here. Eventually, our property taxes will go up drastically to pay for the infrastructure and services required for new development. Will we be able to afford to live here? More people will mean more of our beautiful island lost. Please, don't destroy what makes this place so special for all of us. Please protect those of us who really care about the quality of life here. It is slipping away before our very eyes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Booth. Next I have on the list, Marcy Chavez. Next I have on the list Marcy Chavez.
Welcome this morning, Ms. Chavez. Thank you, thank you. I think the sentence at the top of the agenda, how will these decisions impact our children and families, is the perfect sentiment for my public statement this morning. I have three young children, and we're at the time of the school year when you're barely hanging on, but this is important, and for them I am here. From our schools to gun safety to green space and fields, decisions are being made not with the best interest of our most vulnerable citizens, our youth, at the forefront of our elected officials' minds. I am urging you to advocate and speak out against the threats to Dare County Schools happening in Raleigh. SB 406 and HB 823 and 420 would significantly increase private school vouchers and take funds from public instruction, upwards of $300,000 from Dare County Schools specifically. These bills support school options that are not accessible to all families for reasons such as income, student needs and abilities, religion, or race. Vouchers can be used out of district, and if a child decides to return to a DCS public school, the voucher money would not follow the child until the start of the following year. Yet the public school and teacher would be responsible for catching that student up to grade level without the funding to do so. As private schools do not require the same teacher training and achievements as public schools, the support a transfer child needs could be a heavy lift. Additionally, HB 756 would transfer the responsibility of the standard course of study from the State Board of Education to a group of legislative partisan appointees. Legislators are looking at offering a 4.2% raise over the next two years, putting North Carolina as one of the lowest states in teacher pay. With a loss in budget, insulting compensation, teachers forced to teach a curriculum created by non-educational experts, how challenging do you think retention and recruitment's going to be for our schools? How are our students going to perform on standardized testing after the standards are deconstructed in our state? While it is noted and appreciated that your support of Dare County Schools is immense and historic, we need your advocacy. We cannot throw dollars at this dismantling of public education and expect our schools to thrive and continue to be high-performing. Connect with your fellow elected officials and be united front for our children. The dismantling of public education in Dare County is not the legacy you want to leave behind. As we reckon with the reality of these budgetary and policy implications, it would be remiss to not touch on the safety of our students and teachers. We are lucky to have the presence and county support of the school resource officers, and I recognize that not nearly enough districts can echo that sentiment. Guns are the leading cause of death in children. Last year, more than 43,000 students were exposed to gunfire at school. Applauding the funding you provide for our school resource officers to protect our children while not denouncing gun violence is frustrating, but seeing members of the party that most of you affiliate with cheering on the passing of SB 41 is dumbfounding. How can you care for the safety of my children when you are celebrating making it easier to place more guns in our community? Raising decent humans is hard work. Adding in the brevity of issues we are facing that will negatively impact our schools, a space where we hand our kids over for just as many hours, if not more than we see them in a day, causes concern for the future, to say the least. Resentment over the inability of many elected officials to make decisions in the best interests of our children, aligning with party no matter the cost. And as of late, it feels like the perfect ugly storm is brewing. We are worried about our kids' education, their safety, and unfortunately now threats to their field space. While it's obvious that certain activities mean more to different people, it doesn't mean we can also look objectively at what we have in this county. For example, we have zero dedicated lacrosse fields, four non-school soccer fields, and approximately 25 pickleball courts. One should not be surprised that there is such a loud opposition for any consideration given to reducing the already limited field space. The fields are of poor quality with holes and chunks of grass missing throughout, and teams are only given use of them for six months a year. This past spring, we lost use of the fields for one week because overflow trailer parking was given precedence over our kids. This action by local leadership sent a strong message to our youth and volunteer coaches about what is valued. This is not an us-versus-them issue. This is meant to shed light on the need to determine usage. Look at the ratio of players to space in order to make objective decisions and plans. The lift of improving fields is one that can and should be done in partnership. There are community groups ready to support this endeavor, as evidenced by the numerous volunteers this year who helped coach, line the fields, place flags, research turf options, and more. I want to acknowledge that your job is not an easy one, but you also were not forced into that seat. I also recognize that this is a lot for a Monday morning, but it's the reality of what many families in this community are juggling at this time, and I thank you for the opportunity to share this in public comment. We need proactive future planning with the consideration of our youth at the helm as prioritized by your mission statement. Our community is growing and changing, and we are living the cost of being reactive, and it's expensive, both literally and figuratively. I know it has been suggested already, but we are long overdue for a Dare County State of the Child. Your community organizations are ready for this, your parents are prepared to participate, and our children deserve it.
Finish your comments, if you will.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list is Hannah West. Welcome this morning, Ms. West.
Thank you so much. Good morning, everyone. I'm Hannah Bon West. I'm a local author, a Dare County native, and a mother of two. And today I'd like to address the childcare shortage in our county in hopes that we can start a conversation on this issue and its ripple effects. Like Marcy pointed out, at the top of each meeting agenda, we posed the question, how will these decisions impact our children and our families? So I know that what I share today will fall on concerned ears. So there's a popular quote that says, "She believed she could, so she did." And a while back, I came across a play on this quote that said, "She believed she could, but she lacked access to affordable childcare, so she did not." I shared this with our Outer Banks Mommy and Me organization, and the response was incredible. The posts on our group's Facebook page had dozens of replies and comments within minutes. So here's an example that we hear a lot on our page. "I'm in desperate need of childcare. I have a two-and-a-half-year-old and will be having another child soon. I'm on every waiting list for daycares and preschools, but it's looking like they will not have any openings anytime soon." Another mom replied, "I've been looking for full or part-time childcare for over a year with no success. Thankfully, my mother-in-law is able to help out, but my hybrid work schedule ends soon. I'm on every center's waitlist, and babysitters want $18 plus an hour." Greater access to childcare in Dare County would allow more people to remain in or return to the workforce, easing the labor shortage. And this in turn could take some pressure off of the housing crisis, since many of these parents looking to return to work are already year-round residents with housing. The entire country is grappling with many of these same issues. And here in Dare County, we have fantastic public schools, community college, youth and senior centers, but we are in dire need of more options for early childhood care, and that pertains to children from birth to five years old. The amazing staff at the Children and Youth Partnership let me know how much the board did to keep our existing childcare programs and providers afloat during COVID, and I'm so grateful they're here today to present some of their data illustrating the supply and demand in our county. There simply aren't enough childcare programs to accommodate the growing number of families seeking care in our area. The facilities at the in-home providers that we have are wonderful, but their numbers have dwindled, due in large part to high cost of operating and low wages. If you're lucky enough to find a vacancy in a childcare program, the cost can be another barrier. Average childcare costs for toddlers in North Carolina are around $8,000 a year, and in-state tuition at East Carolina University, for example, is roughly $7,300 a year, meaning that sending your child to daycare or preschool before they can enter kindergarten can be more expensive than sending them to college. Rather than spend their entire paycheck on childcare, a large number of parents, overwhelmingly mothers, make the choice to leave their job, myself included. Many hold college degrees, are highly skilled, and are having to leave professions that we desperately need occupied in our community. You can imagine the impact this has on our local businesses and local economy. One local business owner shared with me how losing two full-time employees in the same year due to childcare issues almost shut him down, and this is, this story is common. We need doctors and nurses, we need teachers, we need restaurant managers, first responders, service industry workers, and many of them live here but are unable to continue in their profession due to a lack of affordable childcare. Luckily, financial assistance is available for eligible families through Dare County's Child Daycare Assistance Program. However, to submit an application for this aid, you must be able to list a licensed childcare provider with a vacancy. But these are very few and far between. So the funding, while available, is essentially inaccessible. The comment that was the hardest for me to read and respond to came from a couple that was excited to welcome their first child, or plan for their first child, but after looking at their options, they decided that maybe it wasn't feasible to start a family at all. So, "We all want a community where people can come and choose to start a family, knowing that they will flourish. Our children are our most precious resource, and there shouldn't be such strain and struggle surrounding their essential care. The strain is felt not only by families with young children, but by society as a whole, affecting all of our stability and all of our success." Since researching this issue, I've collaborated with or been contacted by CYP, the Outer Banks Community Foundation, and the North Carolina Early Childhood Coalition, who've all expressed interest in being a part of the childcare conversation in Dare County. There are some exciting new ideas and childcare initiatives being developed across the state, and it's my hope that Dare County could be among the first to model a solution. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. West. Next on the agenda is Janet Midget. Ms. Midget? All right. Catherine, I can't read her last name. Is Catherine in the audience?
I don't know how to spell it, sir.
I can't even read the spelling. How about Ms. Armstrong? Ernie?
I believe that's the sign-up sheet we signed when we entered the building.
It is? Oh, I thought, well, you signed it for public comment.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was signing, I was following the leaders.
Yeah. Well, that explains all of that, then. How about Brian Magnum?
Let me just ask, is there anybody else?
Welcome this morning, Ms. Stathis.
Thank you very much. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to you today. I have not prepared something as eloquent as others, but thank you. I'm in, I am here on behalf of all the parents with children in the public school system. We urge you to continue funding our school system to keep it as competitive and well-rounded as we have found it to be. My family moved here from one of the best public school systems in Maryland. It was our dream to move to a beach town, but for many years, we had trouble finding one that had a comparable school system. We would have never moved here if we had known that private charter schools and vouchers were to become a possibility. The District of Columbia had implemented a charter school system, and it had been a disaster for many years, especially for those that didn't have the money to send their children to these private institutions. Please do not waste any time or money on them. I had homeschooled my children for two years through COVID, and I know firsthand how hard, excuse me, how hard being a teacher can be. They deserve a proper paycheck. They deserve housing options. Our children deserve to have the best. This also stems into funding for public spaces. I also urge you to not build onto Satterfield Soccer Complex. The existing space is packed to the gills in soccer season, and taking away space for beach volleyball and pickleball is not necessary. Pickleball is already taking over many spaces. We need more tennis courts to become competitive and actually hold tournaments. Please put the children first and improve on what we already have to help them succeed. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome this morning, Ms. Wagner.
Hi, good morning. Good morning, and thank you for this opportunity. My name is Jamie Wagner, Dare County citizen, mother of two in our public schools. For better or for worse, my opening statement today will be the following. Remember that for every case you deal with, your approach should have two purposes. Number one, to move you closer to your goals, and number two, to train and test your machine, for example, your people and your design. Which leads me to my next statements and thoughts generating in this room collectively in today's public comment opportunity. Commissioners, I thank you for being an integral part of Dare County. Without you, parts and pieces of our local and municipal infrastructure wouldn't come together the same, and also connected all the way through to our state government. If it wasn't for each of you, your roles, representation, and integrity, and the impact you all have at the end of the day and side-by-side are your citizens of Dare. Our opportunities would peak to redundant performances that are not within the majority's best interest within certain specifics and here in our community. We are a supposed pillar in a way to our surrounding state, and that is what I hear time and time again, and through budget proposals that exemplify as such. But today, I come with interest to connect and with concerns for what lies ahead. Concerns for the safety and direction of the state of North Carolina in the hands of both House of Representatives and our senator, our fellow constituents. Concerns for the direction of public education in Dare County, our surrounding counties and communities that will also be impacted by these bills and legislation in regards to school vouchers. Concerns what the impact of these partisan divides and in the hands of representative roles and decision-makers will do as the big picture, and as these decisions without needing to lean on our local organizations and our parents, who are already getting by on already thin margins, to uphold these losses. Concerns for what partisan politics do in the current state of affairs across the nation, our state, and our own community, trickling into each election and skewing what the actual focus is, facts and information educating our public should be. Concerns for the state of affairs regarding gerrymandering developed for over a decade here in North Carolina and across the state, and the impacts that this has had for our citizens, fair elections, and voters. Concerns and simple acknowledgement regarding what's at stake regarding the safety and well-being of our children, women of North Carolina, our already underserved communities, and community members who all belong. Concerns about the growth and development of Dare County, its working citizens and developing youth residing in a community that are impacted by this overall growth, and our cost of living and wealth gap rising, all intersected in duties and decisions made within representative roles. I had the honor of attending an annual community collaborative meeting this past week that unites a majority of Dare County nonprofits, organizations, and include arenas such as our Outer Banks Tourism Bureau and the Chamber of Commerce. There, we learned about the growth needs of this community and the commendable services these organizations are working their hardest to sustain and supply. Concerns about how we work together to lessen these divides through budgets, through you and others' leadership, through our opportunities to be involved in the process and help. I didn't come overly prepared to get into the specifics, and with a limitation of five minutes, nor do I want to trigger those who have been made to believe otherwise, but I thank you for the opportunity to connect in this arena and further connect with ground-level community members who continue to come forward interested to be involved and organize. Speaking of organization, I applaud this administration generously and the board for working through recent matters regarding the Wan Chee's Cluster Homes. I applaud the community members of Wan Chee's and Roanoke for their coming together in unity and organization regarding collective concerns and the example of what leadership in their developing, developing community can achieve when honest efforts, with honest efforts across the aisle. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it. That completes the list of public comment. Are there any others in the room that would like to make public comment at this time? Yes, sir. Come forward, state your name.
I'm Brian Irvine. I'm vertigo tattooed and body pierced in Mann's Harbor. I came here to speak about the cluster homes they're trying to do in Mann's Harbor. My concern with that is, years ago, it was allowed to put as many houses as you wanted on property over there. That was stopped around 2001 or '02, and I understand that because I was the last person that was able to put two trailers on a half-acre lot. Since then, they stopped it because of septic and well, or you know, safety for the community. Now you're letting up to seven, eight wells on one acre of land. Same with the septic well. It doesn't seem like it's right. And my biggest concern with the cluster homes, especially in Mann's Harbor, is fire safety. We have the smallest fire department in the county. Our trucks, mom, are from 1986. They only hold a thousand gallons. When you have homes that close together, if there's a fire or breakout, how are you going to put this out? Looking Kill of the Hills last year, they got a full-time fire department with the largest fire trucks, everything you could possibly need. On the beach road, all those houses burnt down, the beach access burnt down. So what's going to happen in Mann's Harbor when you have homes that close together and you get a fire? It's a very big fire hazard. And I think if you do allow cluster homes in Mann's Harbor, that if nothing else, you need to have them put a well in that's for a fire hydrant. that if nothing else, you need to have them put a well in that's for a fire hydrant so that there's fire protection on those homes and the homes around them. And that's my biggest concern with that right now. That's all I'll say.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else out there that would like to make public comment? Yes, ma'am. Come forward, state your name, where you live.
Good morning, thank you. Reverend Dr. Michelle Lewis. I live in Manio on Sir Walter Raleigh Street. And two things, I don't have prepared comments today, but I wanted to make sure that you all in this community of people know that Juneteenth is coming up this month, and the Community Juneteenth celebration is happening on the Saturday before the holiday. So Saturday, the 17th, at 5:00 PM at the Pea Island Cacao Museum. So it'll be a concert, there'll be some snacks that are free for the public, and Tashan B. Selby is singing, and it's just going to be a really nice celebration. So I want to make sure that you all know that you're invited, and we'd love to have you out, and that you all who are here are invited, and we'd love to have you out as well. And just want to celebrate, I've heard all the talks about childcare, and just want to celebrate the really good work of Children Youth Partnership that's here that you'll, you all will hear from later, but also all the people who are running childcare centers in the community. Folks have really struggled to, to make it work and to keep them open, and there are conversations happening in the community amongst providers about how to increase access even on a small scale. So anything that you all can do to continue to increase access and funding for childcare centers and providers in this community would be really, really helpful. I mean, I don't, I don't have kids. I run the Peace Garden Project, but we do, we, we host a youth leadership institute in the summer for middle school and high school age students. And, you know, and, and one of the, you know, sometimes we do have kids who want to participate in the program, but they can't because they have to stay home with siblings and help take care of younger siblings so that their parents can work. So it's even impacting leadership opportunities that students are able to take advantage of in the summertime because you've got, you know, children who are helping raise their, their younger siblings. Thank you for all that you're doing, and for those who are here who are helping to make sure that there is access to childcare in the community. Thank you to y'all as well.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Lewis. Anyone else would like to make public comment? Yes, ma'am. Come forward, state your name. Where you live?
Good morning, gentlemen. My name is Amy Stone, and I live on Burris Road in Wanchees. I am here as part of the Wanchees Preservation Alliance to show support for Man's Harbor and hopefully to keep the cluster homes out of Man's Harbor as well. And to also let them know that even if you all approve the special use permit for Man's Harbor, it's not over. It gets fought at the state level, and there are many avenues on the state level in order to beat this. We're not going to take no for an answer. We are doing fantastic things and raising money to help fight the cluster homes. The fire issue is a real one. Man's Harbor doesn't have city water. I don't know how in the world you're going to protect these homes because once a fire gets started, it's, that's it. They're not going to be able to put it out. They're just going to have to wait for it to burn out. So please, if there is any way, especially through the Fire Marshal, to be able to stop these cluster homes from being built in Man's Harbor, please do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to make public comment? All right, hearing none at this time. Is there anyone in Buxton who would like to make public comment?
No comment from Buxton.
All right. Thank you. That concludes item four on our agenda, public comment. That brings us to item five, manager's proposed budget public hearing. And I have one person who's signed up for that. I apologize once again, I cannot read the last name. Brian? It starts with an M. I can't read the rest of the last name.
He spoke in the other's comment, he's not talking about the budget.
Okay, sorry. So that ends that. Anyone in the audience would like to speak public comment towards the budget? With that being said, I have a, a sheet that the county manager and our county finance director has changes to the manager's budget. I'd like to pa, pass those out to the board at this time. If you'll pass them out for me, I sure will. Dave, I'll, I'll refer to you as the finance director. I believe the county manager says that these are not, where Dave, oh, Dave's in front here, did not affect the budget.
Right. There's only, despite all the line items listed, there's only two items. The first is the county manager discussed with the sheriff and the communications director. They had a request to change an existing telecommunications position to an systems analyst position that nets to zero, except in the second year, in the top far-right column, it, it increases the budget by $15,797,000 in the Plan 25. The net for 24 is zero. And then everything below that, if you recall, the county manager put in $667,181 for an EMS increase and left it up to, he got with the EMS director, and they decided together where to spread those costs to, I believe, is it two positions? Yeah, there's two full-time positions, and then $100,162 part-time salaries, and they asked, the rest is for operations. But again, the grand total net is zero change.
All right. Any questions of the finance director? Do you have any, Commissioner Rollins?
Surprisingly, I do not, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else, any of my fellow commissioners have any questions? All right. With that being said, if you recall at our May 17th board meeting, we received a presentation on the manager's proposed budget for 2024. Following the manager's presentation, we voted to hold a public hearing at this very day, June 5th. The budget has been available for the public's review on our website. We have conducted the public hearing this morning, and we're at the point where I need to know what the pleasure of the board is. Are we going to accept the?
Move to approve.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor by the vice chairman to accept the budget as proposed by the county manager and finance director. It's been, it's been seconded by Commissioner Bateman. The floor, once again, is open for further discussion. Hearing none, then those in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like that, motion carries unanimous. Thank you very much, gentlemen. Thank you, Dave, Sally, your entire finance department and county manager for all of your hard work these past several months dealing with this budget. At this time, that brings us to item six, and we have Mr. Dave Peterson with us this morning from Trillium Health Resources to bring to us annual report. Dave, good to see you again.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you for having me. I really appreciate coming out.
Hi, Dave. Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning. So I'm Dave Peterson. This is my ninth year standing in front of you all. I hope to make it 10. So thank you for hearing our annual report. So let me go ahead with what our mission is. Trillium Health Resources, transforming lives and building community well-being through partnerships and proven solutions. I'll talk a little bit again, just to remind folks about who we are. We'll talk about the big change that's happening across our state with Medicaid transformation, and then how that impacts us organizationally. And then, at the very end, some specific Dare County data. So who we are in numbers. Basically, Trillium covers 28 counties, including Halifax and Bladen Counties, which were just added this past year. As we were before you back in 2018, I talked with you a little bit about some of the changes that were happening. Our total population right now is about 1.5 million, and our numbers this year went down to about 46,000. And the reason for that, I'll talk a little bit later about how private insurance companies have moved to take over the low to moderate risk. We serve about 70% with mental health needs, 20% with substance use disorder, and about 10% with intellectual and developmental disabilities. We contract with over 550 agencies to do this service. So Trillium does not do the service itself, we contract to do that. Last year, our budget spent over $520 million on services for folks. We oversee the smallest county in the state, which you know is right next door, Terrell County, and our largest county is New Hanover County. We cover over 13,000 square miles. Every year, I always put this map up in front of you just to kind of show you how diverse our counties are. In our northern region, that total population up there is about 200,000, and so, and that covers 11 counties. We added Halifax County this past year. The other thing in the central, it goes from Nash County all the way out here to Dare County and Hyde County, and that's the counties that I oversee, and that's about twice the population of 11 counties in the northern region. And then in the southern region, we have eight counties, but if you look at that population, there's hundreds of thousands more people in there mainly because of Wilmington and Jacksonville. And so those are our three regions at Trillium. Back in 2018, I introduced to you the, what the state was moving towards called standard plans. They put out an RFP to see who would be managing the Medicaid population for the low to moderate risk individuals. They got awarded out to five contracts, AmeriHealth, Blue Cross, United Healthcare, WellCare, and Carolina Complete Health. These folks, like I said, will be and have been managing the low to moderate risk. Yes, Commissioner?
What does low to moderate risk mean in a sentence or two, just for us that maybe not, not as familiar?
Good question, Commissioner. So those individuals that have some mental health issues that may need just basic outpatient therapy once a week, once a month, or possibly just some medication management.
Got it. Thank you.
Yep. So the private insurance companies that moved in to serve those folks in July 1, 2021, so that population that we'd been managing for decades moved over to the private insurance companies. Trillium has also partnered with Carolina Complete Health to, to assist us, which is a requirement that the state put on us to partner with another man, with another private insurance company to help us manage the physical health piece. So let me talk a little bit about the tailored plan. There are six local management entities, managed care organizations, thus the LME MCOs. We were going to be fully operational tailored plans, serving the severe mental health, substance use, and developmental disabilities population. Here's the trick that's been happening. The original date for us to go live was July 1, 2022. The state then moved it to December 1, 2022. Then they moved it to April 1, 2023. And now the state has moved it to October 1, 2023.
Dave, was that because Trillium was unprepared to accept this transfer?
Trillium was prepared. We met the metrics for those, and that's why what the state is doing is saying all six managed care organizations have to be ready before we can go live. Okay? All six have to be ready. Thus, we were ready by the, the metrics that were measured by the state. Some of the other ones were not.
So we wait and wait and wait. Do I have that right?
And wait.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. So we were allowed to go live with care management, which was a soft launch in December 1, 2022. So with that, our staff have, you know, now managing the care management piece, and I'll talk just a little bit about that. I want to give you all an understanding of what our map looks like for local management entities, and I use the word local because that's who we are. We stay connected with our counties. We have 28 counties, as you can see how large of our, that light green population is. I also use the example, if you just take Wake County and Johnson County, you'll see there in the pink, those two counties' total population is more than all 28 of our counties. Okay? So we have to manage services much differently than the very urban areas, and we've been doing that. So December 1, the care management started, and here's the big shift. We've been managing mental health, developmental disabilities, and substance use for decades, and now we have to have them being managed their physical health. Okay? We need to learn about COPD. We need to learn about asthma. We need to learn about all the different health issues that those members have. So the other thing that the state is requiring us to do is have a contract with every single pharmacy in all 28 counties because we're going to be managing those medications.
How's that been coming, Dave?
It's been coming. The pharmacies are like, who are you? You know, because they, we've never done that before. So we've been having a lot of talks with pharmacies.
So there are hundreds, if not thousands, of pharmacies that are asking, who are you?
There's over 2,000 pharmacies in our 28 counties that we have to contract with. Okay? And so when we talk about a, a partial shift of the, the low to moderate risk individuals going to the insurance companies, and everybody says, well, then you need to cut back on staff. Well, we now have to manage over 2,000 pharmacies, and so their staff needed to manage that too. The other big lift on our side is we also have to contract with every single primary care doctor's office that carries Medicaid. Okay? So central part of North Carolina, there's a lot of primary care offices where they don't serve Medicaid. They have all self-pay and private insurance. You go east or west in this state, there's almost all the doctor's offices cover Medicaid. So we're also needing to contract with all those primary care offices. Our biggest lift in that is also needing to contract with the hospitals. We did get ECU contract finally. That one was a big lift. We're working on UNC. That's getting very close, but we also have to get hospitals like Duke and, and other large hospitals across the state. So some of the organizational changes. Because of care management having now overseeing the physical health, the system of care staff have moved over to the care management department. I have hired community liaison coordinators now that will be continuing to come out into the communities like they have been in Dare County. Care management includes population health, like I said. We have been contracting with Carolina Complete Health, and they're the ones that are really, because they have had contracts with the hospitals, they are helping us get those contracts with the hospitals, along with our local health departments, because we're now managing the physical health. And there's additional information on our website on this link below. And there's additional information on our website on this link below. So one of the requirements that the state has is our call center. We used to have two lines, one for member services and one for just nine-to-five operations. We now are required to have a separate pharmacy line, because we have to contract with all those pharmacies. We have to have a separate provider line, and when I used to use the term "provider", it was the mental health providers, right? Now, our providers are also the physical health providers, along with the mental health providers. We have to have a separate nurse line, we have to have, like we have been having, the member and recipient service line, and a behavioral health crisis line. Our care management, like I said, is now managing the whole person, which is a big shift with the areas of expertise that they have, just like in substance use, they now have to learn the physical health. So there's a hiring change happening, we need to be pulling in folks with a physical health background. We also have specialty care management teams, and one of the ones that was necessary to keep people out of the emergency departments was an ED disposition team. They check the hospital's EDs every single day, and there's over 20 of them that they check, to see if we have any members that are in the ED. They also have a Department of Juvenile Justice Care Management Team to try to address the kids' issues early on, and we have a rapid access care coordination piece, where if we see individuals that are really struggling, we have to make sure that we have a team that's trying to get them out of the hospital, trying to get them into the local system where they can be better served. Just some project updates. As you all, Dare County has received some opioid settlement funds, we, too, have received some, and we did two RFPs, and we got that money out, and Dare County did receive some additional money from us on that. Friday, had to come out here and drop off some Narcan kits to the health department, so I had to spend the weekend and then present to you this morning, so I really appreciate. But I think Narcan and fentanyl strips are a key piece to trying to keep folks safe. We have been starting to do a lot more work with the different tribes in North Carolina. I've been fortunate enough, and I requested it to be the tribal liaison for Trillium, and I'm enjoying that role. We have been doing some co-responder pilots, we're not calling them pilots anymore, because more and more sheriff's offices and DSSs are asking us if they can do a co-responder, where we have a provider that helps with the sheriff's departments going out on calls for folks with mental health. Our CFAC, Consumer Family Advisory Committee, is required by the state to add a fourth disability group, and that's traumatic brain injury. Although, we have not been allowed to serve those folks yet, it's a pilot that's only in Wake County right now. And then, lastly, the Healing Place in New Hanover. This has been an eight-year project, at least 200-bed facility, 100 beds for women, 100 beds for men, for people with substance abuse and in recovery. We did the grand opening about two weeks ago, and it opened up the March 1, and two weeks ago, there was over 125 people there. Much-needed use of those beds. We're very proud to have something east of 95 to serve folks. So now, let me just hit on the Dare County data. So last year, 814 individuals, and that number has gone down, like I said, because the low to moderate-risk individuals have moved over to the insurance plans. About 525 individuals had a primary diagnosis of mental health, about 276 had a primary diagnosis of substance use, and about 110 had an intellectual and developmental disability diagnosis.
Dave, do you have an estimate on the first two? What the actual number might be, given that this is only a list of, or a number for the people we've helped? As opposed to how many do not report, do not seek help? Do we have any sort of like number estimate in the shadows?
Yeah, that's a really good question, Commissioner. I wouldn't go down the path of guessing that number, but here's what I would say. A lot of the individuals out here also have private insurance company coverage, and therefore, that number isn't included in here.
So there could be two components, private insurance, unreported, and what we show on this slide.
Yes, these numbers are the Medicaid population and those that have absolutely no insurance. Okay? Because we do have folks that have absolutely no insurance. Yep. And I always say, because these folks have dual diagnosis, that these numbers don't add up to 814. And I would be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Anyone have any questions? Go to Commissioner Beg.
Dave, when all this transition goes and finalized, do you think it's going to increase or decrease services offered by Port?
That's a good question, Commissioner.
Don't want to put you on the spot.
Right. So as, and it's public right now that Port has merged with Easter Seals UCP, and Easter Seals is a two-state company, so they're much broader in their infrastructure. They're in Virginia and North Carolina, and all across the state of North Carolina. So the, I wouldn't want to guess whether it would increase or decrease, but I now know that with that merger, their infrastructure is deeper. So their hiring practices may get better, because as we've talked quite a bit out in Dare County, and I should say, there's other counties that have the same thing, and it's not just with Port, that it's hard to hire folks in our industry.
Right. The other thing of the Healing Place is, that's a detox plus a long-term facility?
Yes, there's a, it's a partial detox with, it's an 18-month program. There's an identical one in Raleigh that's been there since 1991, and so it has a really high success rate, about 70% to 75% success rate.
That's fantastic.
Yeah.
That's good.
We're excited.
Dave, does Trillium have dedicated beds in Wilmington?
Yeah. Yes.
Anyone else?
If they call, if someone calls the North Carolina hotline, which usually puts you to Port Services for a detox, is the Healing Place one of those five or six detox that they're going to recommend or have access to?
I would encourage that, I mean, because it's brand-new, so the hotline might not be up to date with that, but our call center, our call center is. But yeah, if the state hotline doesn't have that yet, that's why we're talking about it quite a bit.
What we found in the last two weeks, people calling the Husky, people calling Washington, there are bids there, where there was before hardly ever a bid available, and there's two, so maybe this is taking the pressure off the local detox, which is a fantastic thing.
We're seeing a lot of folks going down that way, instead of going all the way into Raleigh.
Okay.
Dave, do we know, and I'm not trying to put you on the spot, do we know the percent occupancy at this new center in New Hanover County?
Well, when I was there at the grand opening, there was 125 individuals in there, and it's a 200-bed facility, and it'd only been open since March 1.
So we're under capacity, thank God, and able to deal with the need?
Right now, yes, yes.
What does that mean, right now?
Well, because my gut says that as people learn more and more about this...
We'll get more patients.
Yes.
I see.
Yeah.
Okay.
Anyone else? I just wanted to, this is a big thing, what they've done down there, because, like I said, we had two individuals last week, that normally they would have to wait, and they would call them back after two, three days, "Yeah, there's a bid available." They called that morning, and there was a bid, and one was in the Husky, one was in the Washington immediately, and whether someone's suffering and in active addiction, you have a bid for them then, they go, they made that decision. If you tell them it might be tomorrow, you might not get them for another two or three months. So that's big, what they've done here.
I would encourage anybody, and I'd be happy to take you on a tour down there.
Yeah.
It's a wonderful place.
Well, Dave, thank you for what you do.
Yeah, thanks, Dave.
Appreciate the update.
Thank you, Dave.
Thank you much.
Thank you.
That brings us to item seven. We're pleased to have with us this morning Sarah Sampson, Jennifer Bradshaw Garrett, and Bonnie Brumbelow to talk to us about the Youth Partnership for Dare County. So ladies, welcome this morning. Thank you for your patience this morning, waiting for your turn.
All right. Good morning, commissioners, and thanks for the opportunity to be here today. I'm Sarah Sampson, Executive Director of Children and Youth Partnership for Dare County, and I'm here with Bonnie Brumbelow and Jennifer Bradshaw Garrett. And I also want to take a moment to thank and recognize our entire staff that are here today with us, and ask that they stand. We also have some of our board members here with us today, if they want to stand.
This amazing team works together to ensure the well-being of our children in our community. We offer a variety of programs and services for children, youth, and families, and early childhood professionals. We program such as Parents as Teachers, Dolly Parton's Imagination Library, Triple P Positive Parenting, Baby Links, and CYP's Diaper Bank. Today, we're going to focus on the early care and education programs that we offer, as well as to provide you with an update of the current childcare situation in Dare County. But first, I want to highlight one of our most recent events. Kids Fest is an annual celebration of young children, and we had over 1,600 children, families, and caregiver come out. And enjoyed Kids Fest, it's a wonderful festival, a celebration of young children in our community. We hope that you enjoy watching this short video of some of the fun activities that took Kids Fest truly is a celebration of our community, all coming together to support the children and families in our community. We had over 1,600 families come out, or children...
It was that good.
...with over 50 different activities, so it was such a wonderful day and celebration of our community. Next, I want to highlight our diaper bank. See if I can go back. Oops. There we go. I want to highlight the impact that our diaper bank has had since the launch of the program three years ago. Since the launch, we have distributed nearly 6,700 packages of diapers. That's an estimated of 210,000 changes for the better. We continue to see a great need, with around 100 families served each month, and we're thankful that we've been able to sustain the program through community support. We welcome any individual donations or businesses to help us holding diaper collection drives.
Sarah?
Yes?
Diapers are expensive, and you rely on contributions for the most part to make that happen?
Primarily, yes.
Okay.
And also, some of our events that we do throughout the year, some of those donations can go towards supporting the diaper bank.
Do you have corporate donations? I'm sure you do.
Yeah.
Food lines of the world and...
Yeah, some of them, they do collection drives for us. We have diaper collection bins, so any organization, business in our community can place one of those bins at their location, and we have a toolkit that we can provide to help them get the word out and help us collect diapers, so we can sustain our program.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Sarah?
Mm-hmm.
Can you tell me where that baby found all that hair?
I'm sorry?
Can you tell me where that baby found all that hair?
Oh, one of the pictures.
I'm sorry, Vice Chairman.
I'll get back to you with that one. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Jennifer and Bonnie, and they're going to talk a little bit about our childcare-related services.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Hello, my name is Jennifer Bradshaw Garrett, and I'm the Early Learning Specialist for the Children and Youth Partnership. My role at the partnership is to provide support to licensed family childcare homes, childcare centers, and after-school programs through training and technical assistance to assist them in maintaining or improving quality. I help prepare programs for their star-rated license assessment. In North Carolina, providers can earn one to five stars. The higher the star level, the higher the standards, and the higher the quality of the program. Provider can earn higher star level by hiring degree teachers, maintaining low child-to-staff care ratios, having an environmental rating scale assessment, and in order to receive subsidy in Dare County, childcare providers must be at least a star three or higher. North Carolina is considered a childcare desert, especially when it comes to infant and toddler care, with the statewide average of more than families with young children, more than five families in the state competing for every one childcare slot. Childcare is essential to the economic development of our community, and working parents rely on the access to childcare in order to maintain employment. In Dare County, there are 1,594 children under the age of five. In Dare County, access to high-quality, accessible childcare for children, birth to five, is very limited. We have seven family childcare homes, and we have 14 licensed childcare centers. Among those 14 licensed childcare centers, we also have One Head Start and four NC pre-K centers as well, and so those programs require special eligibility for those children, so they're not, it's not for all. Let's see, so they have to meet specific eligibility requirements. And then, we also have five after-school programs. So that's a total of, we have 26 licensed programs in Dare County. Finding infant toddler care is very challenging in Dare County. I know we've had a few people that already spoke upon that. I know the state average is five, five children for every one slot, but I really feel in Dare County, that number would probably be higher, more like eight for every slot. In North Carolina, anyone providing care for more than two children who are not related for more than four hours a day is required to be licensed by the state of North Carolina. Dare County does have legally operating part-day programs, but many working parents need full-time programs. Since the number of children that need full-time care is far more than the number of childcare slots available, we fear that children are receiving care in unlicensed and unregulated family childcare homes. These are homes that are not monitored for health and safety, and they could possibly be putting our children at risk. There are challenges to be a childcare provider in Dare County. One first is a livable wage. In the state of North Carolina, the average salary or hourly wage for a childcare provider is $12 an hour. That's less than $25,000 a year. And commonly, they have no benefits or limited benefits. Available and affordable housing in Dare County, if you make less than $25,000 a year, it's really impossible for you to find affordable housing here.
Yeah, we're pretty aware of that. Yeah, everybody hear that out there?
Yeah, okay.
When we want to stop everything, please continue, ma'am.
Also, too, for childcare, also, staff turnover due to better opportunity in the service industry is also, they also compete for people that are employed in childcare. And then, also, too, even if you were a provider and you wanted to open up more centers in Dare County, there's a lack of real estate for childcare centers and acreage, because a childcare center is required to also have a playground, so they not only have to have a space to open, but they also have to have some land in which they have a playground as well.
Sure, makes sense, yeah.
Yeah. At Children and Youth Partnership, we do offer startup technical assistance to providers to become licensed, and Bonnie is going to talk a little bit more about that. Thank you.
Before you go to that...
Yeah, don't go, Jennifer.
Oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
Yeah, just a question. You show on your slide here that there are 1,594 children under age five, according to the July 22 census.
Yes.
How many of those... How many of those, or is it all of them in that number, that are seeking childcare slots?
I wouldn't say that all of those are seeking childcare slots.
Right, that's right. Do you have an estimate of how many of that number?
I don't.
Okay.
I do not. I know that last year, Bonnie received over 50 referrals.
Gotcha.
For childcare, and so not that everybody that needs childcare reaches out to us for a referral, but I do know that we made 50 childcare referrals last year.
Gotcha, thank you.
You know, there's a great deal of family coverage on childcare, relatives, aunts, grandmothers, et cetera. 550 early childcare slots in Dare County?
Yes.
So we have 550 represented by the seven, 14, and five programs listed above on that slide? Seven childcare homes, 14 centers, five school age programs.
Yes, we have seven family childcare homes, 14 childcare centers, and then school age.
Ah.
So we got five school age after-school programs that are in the Dare County schools.
So those would be excluded. So the seven homes and 14 centers.
Well, yes.
Represent the 500, I'm trying to tie the numbers together to keep this consistent in my thinking.
Sure, the childcare, early childcare slots are the family childcare homes and the childcare centers.
Right, so those 21.
Because the five school age programs serve school agers.
Right, so those 21, then of the 550, roughly 25 students per, on average, if you just did a smooth-out average, and I'm sure the homes have fewer than 25, which would imply the 14 centers have far more than 25.
Right.
And those centers are geographically dispersed from Hatteras to Duck?
From Hatteras to southern shores.
Close enough.
Yeah.
So we don't have what I would call a community abandoned of access to a center, like there's nothing south of the bridge, that sort of thing, that's not happening.
There's one childcare center in Buxton. They did have a childcare center, but it closed during COVID. So they lost about 96 slots. So they have one center in a church, they call it, GS 110.
In Frisco.
In Frisco, I'm sorry, Frisco.
Same. And how many slots does that have?
About 25 or 30, it's a small program.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So we have families that will drive up from Hatteras to utilize childcare here, if they can get a slot.
I see.
Wow. There's a lot of, it's a lot of ingenuity going on in this age group under five, you know, that's kind of hard to get a grip on those statistics, but a lot of these people that have young kids, I mean, I see them, they're just trying to survive, and they're making it work.
Well, I was going to look at you, Danny, to get any more insight on this, you know, the whole Avon, the tri-villages, Buxton, Frisco, Hatteras.
It's not specific to that area down there, it's something we deal with here and there, but it's our workforce, and these parents are survivors, they're making it, making it happen, doing what they can for their kids, you know, just...
We visited that center that I guess closed, that was in Buxton, we were all there for that review.
Yep.
Do we know why they closed? Ladies?
Lack of staff turnover, they weren't able to employ enough teachers to maintain enrollment.
Hmm, seems to be a theme throughout the county.
So it seems to me you have 1,594 under the age of five, and you only serve 550, you have 1,000 children somewhere staying with grandparents, parents. In my case, I don't mind telling you, we have had waitresses bring their kids to work, and we give them a coloring sheet, and they sit over there, and of course, I let them do that because they're good, hard-working people, but that's not the most ideal situation for childcare.
That is correct, and there's unlicensed guys out there running, fortunately, some of these guys are pretty good, not everybody, I mean, they're unlicensed.
Which we encourage them to get licensed, that's why we're here. We want them licensed. We want them regulated.
But I want to ask you this, that's a lot of hoops to jump through, and you're also under constant scrutiny from the state, correct?
That is correct.
And I mean, some people, we have the same situation, I can only apply it to how I see in my business, but we had people that had those children there, the people that were taking care of their kids chose not to do that because of the fact of the restrictions that were placed by the state.
No, I understand, that's a very real-life scenario describing.
Right, but when I think about that, I think that the standards are there for a reason, and they're to protect our children, and they're to ensure that they get the best quality care that they need.
I get it, I understand, but I'm just giving you a scenario of why it's...
Yeah, and we're here to help them get through those hoops, so if anyone is interested, especially a family childcare home provider, if they have the home environment that would be appropriate.
It's a tremendous resource.
Encourage them to contact us and let us help them through those, because once you get there, you've made it. They can be quite successful.
And they're currently funds right now, there's an expansion and access grant that is available right now across the state where people can get grant money to open up their, a childcare center, open up a family childcare home. They're competitive, but I think if you're increasing slots, increasing childcare, that you have a more likely, more likely chance to receive those funds.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I'm Bonnie Brombalo, and I manage the Childcare Resource and Referral along with the Early Childhood Higher Education Program. So we offer support to families and childcare professionals to help resolve some of these issues that, and challenges that we face in Dare County. For families seeking childcare and early education options for their children, we provide childcare referral counseling, including information about availability and sometimes the inavailability of programs, and how to identify quality childcare that meets their family's needs. And sometimes the conversations just become about strategies that they can use to, you know, when they can't find childcare, and what they can do in the meantime. And, you know, for example, my grandchildren right now, I've cut back my hours a couple of years ago, and every Monday, care for my grandchildren, they're juggling, you know, with friends, family, and neighbors, and so sometimes those conversations lean that way. We also collaborate with the Department of Social Services to provide funding for childcare subsidies to eligible families. We offer childcare startup services to recruit and assist new centers and family childcare homes through the licensing process. Just last month, we collaborated with the library to offer an informational session on opening a family childcare home, and we plan to offer these sessions quarterly to provide support for potential providers throughout the licensing process. So we help, we hope to be able to reach those families that may be interested in becoming a family childcare home. We also provide general support to existing childcare programs with meeting licensing requirements, criminal background checks, required training, stabilization, and expansion access grant applications, and the reporting. Research shows that a higher-educated early childhood workforce enhances the quality of young children's educational experiences. Therefore, CYP's Professional Development Program provides support to childcare professionals by helping them enroll in college coursework and early education. This support includes assistance with scholarships, enrollment and registration in local colleges, and providing financial rewards for completing higher education and achieving associate and bachelor's degrees in the field of early childhood. These financial incentives help reduce teacher turnover, providing stable and high-quality care for young children. And the slide shows last year's program where we provided education incentive bonuses to professionals that achieved higher education. So we gave nine teachers received a bonus for taking at least three college credits. Three met higher standards by achieving a certain number of educational credits, and then 13 actually received what we call the Super Seven, which means they meet seven points in the rated license, and by achieving an associate or bachelor's degree in early childhood education. And five of those did achieve the bachelor's degree. So we're proud of our early childhood professionals for making the effort to become educated and care for our young children, but the challenges of low pay and the workforce shortages are still there. Thank you.
Hang on, ladies, real quick, how many slots are needed if you had a magic wand and waved it today? Do you have a magic wand, Jennifer, Bonnie? Wave it, solve it. How many slots do you need? How many teachers, and where? Got to know.
I would say double.
So we need 1,100 slots?
Double as much as what we have.
And we need them everywhere, from southern shores to Hatteras? And we would need how many?
And then the workforce.
Providers.
We probably have 75.
Double it, need 75 more.
Providers that work in the facilities now, I would think we'd need another.
Okay, well, that helps me get a scope and dimension of what we're talking about.
Some of the programs have classrooms that are closed, so there are some facilities that have spaces available, but they can't find teachers. So even if we did have the openings or the facilities, it would be, recruiting the teachers would be challenging.
Wow.
Appreciate all the good work you guys are doing.
Thank you, ladies.
I do want to just get back...
With specific regard, just excuse me a second, but with the specific regard to hiring the staff, does that come down to just basic availability of people, or does that come down to salaries that are generally paid? What's the limitation there?
Well, I think it's happening in all businesses across the county and the state.
Yes, ma'am.
So people, I believe, would be the first thing, but the low pay, when they are losing staff to higher-paid positions, it's difficult work.
Housing as well. These centers...
It's the same thing.
But we heard earlier, Danny, during a public comment, that I think it was babysitters are making $18 an hour, so wouldn't these folks be earning 18? They're not earning $18.
The average is $12 an hour for the state.
Say again, Jennifer?
The average wage is $12 an hour for a childcare provider.
And it, the parents can't pay more, you already heard about what the tuition for childcare is. The cost of operation is high. It's a, it's a very complex.
Insurance, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I wanted to announce that we are planning to host a State of a Child Conference next year. Our goal is to bring a greater awareness to the importance of high-quality learning opportunities for all children. We will invite the community to come together to address areas impacting children and families, such as, but not limited to, the access to high-quality childcare, which we know is essential to families, to businesses, and the economic development of our community. And more information will come about the conference, and we invite anybody that wants to be part of this important work to reach out to us. I do want to wrap up our presentation, just letting you know that you will see the carnival rides coming back to the Soundside Event Site, this is one of our fundraisers. We receive a generous portion of the proceeds from the carnival, and right now, we're still selling discounted vouchers at our office through Wednesday, and anybody can come by our office within our operating hours to purchase those, and we welcome anybody to come out and help us celebrate the kickoff of the summer. And just, just in general, if anybody wants more information, if you can, if you want to visit us at darekids.org, and we want to thank you, Dare County Board of Commissioners, for your continued support, because we could not do what we're doing without your support. Thank you.
Thank you, ladies. Appreciate all that you do.
Thanks, ladies.
Thank you.
Board, do you take a five-minute recess? County Board of Commissioners meeting back to order. We will move into item eight in just a moment. As I mentioned at the beginning of our meeting, the county manager felt ill just before the meeting started and had to leave. I'd like to go over a few things under his agenda now, rather than into the meeting. I have another obligation, I didn't realize that this meeting was going to drag on, but we'll drag on to after 1:00, I'm sure, and the vice chairman will take over when I have to leave, but I wanted to get these items out of the way that the county manager had. First one, if you recall, we addressed the old swimming hole issue at our last meeting, and as you very well know, there's a lifeguard there. County manager wants to know if we want to take that lifeguard services and move it to the Rodanthe area. So want to get your input.
Right, if I saw, basically said we need to leave the picnic area open, but using a swimming hole is either ill-advised, unfounded, and frankly not...
It's dangerous.
And I'm, mine, I'm in favor of removing the swimming hole.
I'll second that if that's a motion, Ross.
I will make that as a motion.
Well, make that two-part, if you will, that being closed, but also the fact that we want to use that guard...
And move it to Rodanthe, yes. Two-part motion to do that.
Thank you, sir.
Close the old swimming hole and move the guard position to Rodanthe.
Motion on the floor given by Commissioner Ross, it's been seconded.
Close the old swimming hole to swimming.
Count.
Leaving the campground and picnic area open, and relocate the guard position to Rodanthe.
But clarification, we're still going to leave the picnic area...
Yeah, I just, she's added that to the motion.
Absolutely.
Yes, sir.
All right, any further discussion?
Yeah, it's just the swimming area and that, and that part of where it's located has been dangerous for quite some time.
Yes, it has.
It's just, that area's deteriorated even more, so I feel for the safety of all of our citizens that we make this motion.
Yeah, absolutely. All right, those in favor, the motion signify for saying aye.
Aye.
I oppose like so. Motion carries announced. Second item that county manager had, if you recall, beach nourishment, you know, we did a lengthy presentation in Rodanthe a number of months back, we addressed the public, lot going on there. Right now, our nourishment funds, we don't have the funds to do a project there. It's been a number of years since we asked the federal governments, we've been turned down so many times from the federal government for assistance with nourishment, that Representative Murphy's office has reached out to us. There appears that there might be a long stretch of possibility of seeking federal funding to do such a project. The representative Murphy did not want to pursue that without a request from our Board of Commissioners. So I'm asking our Board of Commissioners that they will allow me to prepare a letter to Representative Murphy seeking federal funding for Rodanthe.
So move.
Yeah, okay, our question.
Yes, sir.
Can we request funding for each community up and down the Otter Banks, or is this request only for Rodanthe?
This is specifically for Rodanthe at present time because of the urgency of it. Doesn't mean that the representative wouldn't certainly address that in other areas for us. We've just not had that ask in recent years.
I'm...
You're reluctant to do just specifically Rodanthe, is what I'm hearing.
Well, what I'm trying to explain is, yes, I would like to accommodate and deal appropriately with any and all nourishment needs, and this is certainly an opportunity we don't want to pass up. But is that, well, I guess you've answered the question, that would be the most pressing, urgent need the county faces today.
Well, let me just say this.
Yes.
Let me just say this. Our plan, and Dave, you correct me if we're wrong, we have, we have, we have done projects in the northern beaches, and we have done projects in Avon and Hatteras, and we have done maintenance as well, and we've gotten funding from FEMA when, when a, when we've lost that.
Yes, yes.
We, we can't afford to do a... We, we can't afford to do a Rodanthe because we don't want to jeopardize future maintenance for what we've already done.
Right.
So I feel like that we're in a very good position to continue to do the maintenance, continue to hopefully, as long as FEMA will provide us funds when a storm comes and deplenishes what was there. I'm not so sure that that ask of what we've already done and we've planned and we've done for the future would, would help in any greater situation. This Rodanthe is of extreme need and desire. And that's why the ask and the representatives reaching out to us, because there are some folks in Rodanthe that appear to have some pretty strong ties to representatives in DC that are trying to help him make this happen. So that's why he's reached out and said, I'll give it a shot.
Right.
They're asking if we're in, and in my opinion, the answer is yes.
Yes.
No, I agree. I agree, we're in. I'm not disputing that. I'm just clarifying that if we were to receive a grant, Dave, I'm looking at Dave Clausen, our requirement would be to conduct maintenance on this. And do we know the estimated cost of such a project initially?
Yeah, we, yeah, we exceeded $30 million.
Yeah.
Yeah, we got a feasibility study from Coastal Science and Engineering.
It was a loaded question. I knew the answer. I just wanted it on the record, guys. My second part of that is, our beach nourishment model would then add this responsibility for maintenance in four to five years of another 30-plus million.
That's correct.
And the way the model was flowing, you could possibly do the initial project, although at that time, we were working with 20 million.
That's right, we were working with 20.
But we ran out of money for maintenance.
Right.
So the answer to my question is, it will be on our model to maintain and do the maintenance, and we will not bankrupt the model by adding 35 or 40 million to it in four or five years.
Correct.
I'm looking for, yes, Rob, we will not bankrupt the model.
Oh.
That's a question for you, sir.
Yes.
Yes, we will not bankrupt the model.
Are you saying if you did a federally funded project and then took the maintenance cost?
Unless the federal-funded project's going to provide maintenance, which I didn't think it was.
In that case, we could cover maintenance, yes.
Okay, that's what I was looking for. Thank you, sir.
All right, now that we've had that discussion, pleasure of the board.
We have a motion on the floor.
And he got a second, too? Yeah, all right. Sorry, those in favor of the motion then.
Who was the second, please? I didn't hear.
Repeat, pardon?
Rock.
Who seconded the motion?
I did, and I think Rob did, too.
Vice chairman made the motion.
Second was Commissioner Bateman.
Second was Commissioner Bateman. Do you need the vice chairman to repeat the motion?
Motion for the Board to send a letter to Congressman Murphy to seek federal funding for Rodanthe project.
Yes, that's correct. All right, any further discussion?
Some of these, Mr. Chairman, some of these questions we're asking about maintenance, that's going to be hashed out. We've got to start. You've got to start on the first run in the latter. You can't jump up to.
That's correct. Those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed, like so? Motion carries unanimous. Next item is a donation of a truck to the Lions Club. Dustin, I believe you have that worked out. Would you come forward and help us with that? I believe we have that taken care of. And if you can go into a little detail with us on that. But they're in need of a, of a truck, and we can provide that. But if you'll share with the board.
Yes, sir, that's correct. We've got three vehicles that have been identified out at Public Works as surplus that we can help the Lions Club use if, you know, they approve of that particular vehicle. It's not a truck, it's three different van options. They range from a 2014 to a 2017. The mileage is approximately 150,000 up to like 260,000 miles. But they are three options there for them. As I understand it, they're going to utilize these vans for a supply distribution. So if they're okay with those three options, then absolutely, we've got a solution.
Very good.
But they need one or three?
Just one.
Just one.
We have three options for them to pick from, whatever.
He's just giving them three options. You need a motion? Yes, sir. Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, it's a motion on the floor about Commissioner Bateman, it's been seconded by Commissioner House. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like so?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, Dustin. And then the last thing the county manager has, there are three positions for Medicaid expansion that are needed. And I'll certainly ask our health director if she wants to make some comments with that respect. But in light of that, the budget is neutral for the next budget session, and we may have some impact in 2025, just not sure yet. But Sheila, would you address that for the board?
Certainly. Good morning. So we're requesting permission, Bobby is going to be bringing this to you, for three additional income maintenance worker positions. This is in light of the adoption of Medicaid expansion. Based on the anticipated number of applications could be excess of 2,500, with an estimated of possibly 1,800 new eligible enrollees. We are requesting those positions. The state is providing and the federal government funding, so those would be completely funded. They would not require any additional county funds to fully fund the positions and benefits required. Chuck and I will be here at the July meeting to provide an overview of Medicaid expansion and the anticipated impacts on Dare County, as well as potential impacts that could affect our '25 fiscal year budget. Fortunately, the money that will support expansion of Medicaid will be ongoing. So the big picture is a nominal impact on Dare County financially. But we wanted to go ahead and get started in advertising and trying to recruit for these new positions, because Medicaid could be rolling out July, August. We don't have an exact start date from the state yet.
Do we have some, do we have some people in house who would qualify for this? A lot of it's administrative, is that correct?
So when we come back in July, one of the positions, actually, there's two positions, a supervisor position and an auditor position. Those, we believe, will be able to promote from within to the next-level positions. These three positions would be starter positions, so we would need to do external recruitment.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Sheila. And Dave, I believe the county manager was seeking a motion to allow him to.
To do the budget and then to cover those three million, because you don't meet until the middle of the month.
Yeah, that's correct.
So moved.
All right, motion on the floor by Commissioner Couch. It's been seconded by Commissioner Bateman and House. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed, like so? Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, gentlemen. That's all I had that the county manager had on his list of items when it comes to item 18. That brings us to item eight, The Wall That Heals. And Ms. Patty Sullivan is here this morning, along with the vice chairman, to make this presentation.
Fellow commissioners, thank you for having us here today to introduce you to The Wall That Heals. We do have several of our Veterans Advisory Council members here with us, standing with us today. And also, we have some volunteers back in the back. But anyway, thank you again for having us here today. As you will see, The Wall That Heals is an exceptional replica of the Vietnam Veterans Memorial in Washington, DC, that will be shown this year at the Soundside Event Site from November 15th to the 19th. We wanted to present this to you and the people of Dare County today to make you more familiar with The Wall That Heals. Hopefully, a lot of folks will plan to attend. Due to the location, Nag's Head will be an integral part of the planning and presentation of the event, and I'm sure that it will be exceptional. The first slide, The Wall That Heals, is being brought here through the efforts of the Dare County Veterans Advisory Council. Some of the members, as I said, from the council are joining us here for this presentation. Here's a short video that shows how the event works. There's also a video on the Dare County website under Veterans Services. A part of the video that you will see is a 30-second ad that is being run on the screens at the RC-10 Theaters in Kill Devil Hills. After the video, Ms. Patty O'Sullivan, who's joined me here, and who is our Veterans Services officer, will talk about the event in a little more detail, and then we will answer any questions that you may have. Thank you again for your time and interest.
It's, yeah, it's supposed to be, if you click the link, maybe. It was embedded.
The Vietnam Veterans Memorial Fund, many years ago, created a replica of the wall that travels to communities around the country that we call The Wall That Heals. This mobile replica really is about taking the names home to communities, large and small, to allow people to have that same kind of healing experience, to come and show their respect, to remember those 58,000 whose names are on the wall, as well as the 2.7 million Vietnam veterans who served who returned home. It's a chance to look back and pay their respects to those who answered the call of service to their country, especially those who made the ultimate sacrifice.
To be able to take this around at communities that may not even know anything about the wall or the war, especially for the young kids, to come out and see these things and get educated on it. People need to know what these 58,000-plus gave their lives for, whether they want to hear about it or not, they need to know.
The experience at The Wall That Heals is, as you go from one end, end toward the center, the wall actually rises up above you so that it is taller than you are, which is one of the key design aspects of the wall in Washington. As you go down one of the walkways, the wall actually rises above you. And I think that has a psychological impact where you actually understand that there is something important here. It is so large that it creates an emotion of power. And you understand you're supposed to stop, you're supposed to think about it. And in this case, you can read the names, you can see your reflection in the wall, and you have to remember why those names are inscribed. These are people who sacrificed their lives for our country.
I get this feeling in my stomach, the pride that you see. When we went into San Dimas, the kids were all along the streets with their American flags. That always chokes me up, because I know what it is to serve this country. And we, as Americans, sometimes don't understand the cost of war. Hate the war all you want, but don't hate the warrior.
I met a couple of guys here this morning, and one guy, I walked up to him and he started crying already. Man, it makes me feel good, not that he's crying, but that he's here to have bonding with someone and being able to find his buddy on the wall. It means so much.
Hey, guys, is that an exact-size replica, or is it a slightly scaled-down?
Three. Scaled down.
Three quarters. Okay, sorry, thank you. Yeah, sorry.
Good morning. I'm Patty O'Sullivan. I'm here on behalf of the Dare County Veterans Advisory Council to let you know that out of over 100 applications, Dare County was one of 32 to be selected to host The Wall That Heals in November. The tour extends from California and goes across the country and ends in Dare County. We feel it's important to bring The Wall That Heals to Dare County since our county, as well as the surrounding counties, are home to several thousand veterans, including those that served in Vietnam or during the Vietnam era. Many of these veterans are disabled due to their exposure to Agent Orange and may never be able to travel to Washington, DC. Just like the Vietnam Veteran Memorial in Washington, DC, there are more than 58,000 names on The Wall That Heals. The tractor-trailer carries The Wall That Heals. Once it's unloaded, turns into the education center. It features a timeline and artifacts from the Vietnam War. One of the features it offers is the Wall of Heroes, which are local veterans who died during the war, as well as the in-memory section, which highlights local veterans who served in Vietnam and passed away after they return, no matter what the cause. The wall is inclusive to honor all Vietnam veterans. There will also be an information education tent that will allow visitors to be able to find names of family members or friends whom they may have lost and shows them how to create a rubbing of their name. The wall is scheduled to come in November 14th via escort. It gets set up on the 15th, and then it's technically, the opening day is the 16th, and is open 24 hours until the 19th of November. We already have several volunteers to help set up and take down the wall, as well as staff the wall while it is here, but we still need more. If anyone is interested, please feel free to contact me or to go to our website, darenc.gov/wall, and click on the volunteer tab to sign up. There's also a tab that will allow individuals or groups to sign up for private tours of the wall given by the VVMF staff. Thanks to the help of our Public Relations Department, The Wall That Heals has a dedicated website so people can learn about The Wall That Heals, as well as get information for the event. The next slide is actually the advertisement that is currently running in the Kill Devil Hills movie theater. It was embedded in. Oh, okay, sorry.
You know, Patty, while we're waiting, they've got a pretty solid ROTC program up in Elizabeth City and Camden, that area might be able to pull in some, some strong backs. Yep, the kids are.
We reached out to the Wanchi Coast Guard and.
The Wall That Heals, a 370.
Okay.
The Wall That Heals, a 375-foot-long replica of the Vietnam Veterans Memorial. "The Wall That Heals," a 375-foot-long replica of the Vietnam Veterans Memorial in Washington, D.C., along with its mobile education center, is coming to Dare County this November. This free exhibit honors the more than 3 million Americans who served during the Vietnam War and will be on display from November 16 to 19 at the Soundside Event Site in Nagshead. For more information and to find ways you can volunteer, donate, or become a sponsor,
Anyway, as I was, we did reach out to the Coast Guard in Wanchis and Oregon Inlet, and they said that they would help construct it as well. So, when, this is our billboard that we actually have. It's set up coming through, when you come out of Plymouth, headed towards the Outer Banks. But when the Veterans Advisory Council expressed interest in hoping "The Wall That Heals," two of our council members accompanied me to see the wall when it was in Garner and for a behind-the-scenes tour in Concord, North Carolina. We all felt it was a very moving experience, which reestablished our commitment to bring to Dare County "The Wall That Heals" and to our veterans. I'd also like to share that in addition to our Veterans Advisory Council, we have a dedicated committee who has been working diligently to make the event happen. We have several volunteers, including Wally Overman, Marie Ruggero, Terry Gray, Lisa Lloyd, Tim Willis, and Barry Hope, some of which were able to, are able to be here today to support us. We've also had help from other volunteers in putting up the signs you see around the county. I'd like to thank Dare County for their continued support in making this event possible. My husband is a Vietnam veteran, as well as several of the veterans I help here in Dare County. I remember what it was like for them when they returned home, and we're hoping to be able to honor them and give them the respect that they deserve. Thank you.
We have now made this presentation to all the towns, the Visitors Bureau Board, and the Chamber of Commerce. All were very receptive and enthusiastic about the event. Several have made or pledged donations, for which we are extremely grateful. This board has also agreed previously to donate to this project, and again, we are very appreciative. Dare County will be the final stop on the tour this year. It began in California and will work its way across the country to us. We want to make it a special event here. We will have probably 150 motorcycles and a large number of Jeeps. Steve is taking care of that. As part of the escort, beginning in Plymouth, the escort will wind its way through Columbia, Manns Harbor, and Manio to the event site in Nagshead. Kill Devil Hills Commissioner Terry Gray has worked with law enforcement along the route to have it green-lighted all the way. We hope the Alligator River Bridge will cooperate as well. Just saying. The opening ceremony will be at 10:00 a.m. on Thursday, November 16, and we're working to have a military band, a flyover, a 21-gun salute, and speeches by veterans, local officials, and hopefully even an admiral. There will also be a candlelight vigil on the evening of Friday, November 17, at 6:00 p.m. for the lives lost in the Vietnam War. Anyone can donate, and all donations will help to bring "The Wall That Heals" to Dare County, as well as support Dare County veterans through the Veterans Advisory Council. Donations can be made as follows: online at the Interfaith Community Outreach, and by check to Dare County Motorsports Charity Group. It is important to please note on any donation that it is for "The Wall That Heals." Donation information can also be found on the Dare County website, which has a link to "The Wall That Heals." Thank you all very much, and we'll entertain any questions you may have. Or, actually, Patty will entertain your questions.
Thank you, guys. Look forward to it.
Yes.
Definitely.
The only thing I have is, you can definitely sign my wife and myself up for volunteers.
Oh, okay.
Be more than happy to do that.
We have, the volunteer site has different times, so if you just want to let me know, I could fill you in there.
Sure will.
All right.
Also, a second part of that, my father served in the military during the Vietnam era, and so did my father-in-law.
Wow.
I'm going to tell you this, as you well know, being a Vietnam veteran, you were never given a welcome home, like the soldiers of World War II and World War I. From the bottom of my heart, thank you for your service.
All right, any other questions?
Would like to mention also that, be remiss if I didn't say that, Urban Commissioner Bateman is working to get volunteers from the Dare Challenge Group, so we hope to have, as someone said, a lot of strong backs helping us. The construction and the take-down of the wall does require some effort, and we will appreciate any volunteering that does occur for that. Thank you.
Marcia just wanted to say something.
I just wanted to say first, I'm Marcia Brown. I'm the Secretary of the Veterans Advisory Council and have been since 2012. Thanks to y'all asking me to serve, and I've been very blessed to work and run among these veterans. My husband Billy was a Vietnam veteran, and he served on the council. I've got his shirt on, I've got his ashes on, and he stays close to me all the time. If he was here, he would tell you how proud he is of you all supporting this event. He would tell Patty how proud he is of her for all the hard work she's put into this. And Vice Chairman Overman, Chairman Woodard, I know that you're a veteran yourself. I thank you. We all thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Each one of these folks behind me in the blue shirts are all veterans. And I am the only non-veteran on the council, but I represent families of veterans. I just wanted to tell you, each one of you have a book as a gift, and I brought it from one of our local boys. He's born and raised Dare County, and he is an Outer Banker through and through. He's a waterman. He lives in Collington, and he served in the U.S. Army as a Ranger in Special Forces in Vietnam. And when you're married to a Vietnam veteran, they often don't talk about it, so you don't know a lot of things. And though I've been really involved in the council for, since 2012, and actively served, I write "Gigline," which is a weekly column for veterans. I've had the blessing and the privilege of meeting a lot of veterans, learning a lot from them, and this book, Robbie Beasley, it's Charlie R. Beasley, Jr. in Collington, he wanted to gift it to you all, and hopefully you'll read it, you have a chance to understand more about the Vietnam War that many of us didn't know. I learned a lot from this book, and I thank God for y'all. I wanted this to come about for so long, this wall, because I've been to the one in D.C. with Billy. And I will tell you, the first meeting we had to formulate the committee, I was coming in, I wanted, I had thought that maybe, you know, get it going, and God audibly told me in my ear to, where are you, Patty? To ask Patty to do it, to head it up. She is the most fantastic. She doesn't like to be embarrassed. I'm gonna do it anyway. You all could not have chosen a better representative of our veterans as the veteran service officer. She's the only official representative between the veterans and the VA. She does an outstanding job. She works way, way, way overtime to serve our veterans in this county, as well as her husband tuning in each one that you see. They're awesome. And I'll tell y'all in the audience, if any of you have veterans in your family, or you're a veteran yourself, please tell them about Patty. Tell them to come talk to her about what their benefits might be or what they might be entitled to. Do it. Our veterans deserve it. All these folks that are dedicated, love our vets, and want to serve them, I just want to thank you again. We're proud of what you're doing to help us, help our vets. God bless y'all.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'll tell Robbie.
Do y'all want to, while you're here, do you want to address item NAD that's...
The event grant?
The event grant?
As far as, I submitted the grant for signature, and the county manager said it had to be run by you, that there was some kind of wording in it, that if the tourism board was unable to fulfill the grant, that it was going to be Dare County's responsibility, but that's all I really knew about it. He had it, he was gonna address it, so I...
Well, it's, it's under, it's under, it's under item NAD here, and there's a letter in here, in-kind donation.
Is the amount $25,000?
Yeah, we, we voted on that some time ago to, to provide $25,000.
Yeah.
We've already voted on that, and to provide that funds to you folks.
Oh, through the tourism?
Yes.
Oh, okay. All right, I didn't know that. All right. Well, thank you.
We voted on that, and... Hold on, everybody, let me listen to the clerk, please. Did everybody hear? I made that motion. The motion's been made by Commissioner Bateman, it's been seconded by Commissioner Ross. Any further discussion? Pardon?
No, thank you.
Hearing those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it, Patty. Thank you, gentlemen.
How many, real quick, Wally, how many communities were selected to host the wall, of which we will be the final one? Did I hear 32 across the country?
Thirty, thirty.
Thirty?
Thirty.
So, we are 30 across the country?
Yeah, from California to the East Coast.
By God, Dare County is on the map. We got the high school, and then nation-state champions, we've got the wall.
That brings us to item 10.
This is good stuff.
Which is Anchor Commercial LLC Cluster Home Development Special Use Permit. Now, ask Noah if he will come forward, please.
Morning, Chairman Commissioners.
Good morning, Noah.
Anchor Commercial LLC, Mike Nice of the LLC has submitted a special use permit application for a cluster home group development in Manns Harbor on Shipyard Road. The property is currently identified as two separate parcels. The two parcels will need, need to be combined before any construction activities can occur. They're proposing to build 12 dwellings. You know, the, the cluster home ordinance requires that the dwellings be 1,200 square foot or less of heat-to-space, occupied for a long-term period as defined, and the ordinance, which is 31 days or more. The parcel is 3.14 acres. The Section 2231.1 allows for 30% lot coverage. The site plan that's included with their application shows a lot coverage of 27.4, being below the allowed coverage. The dwellings are separated by 30 foot on one side of the proposed road and 44 on the other, exceeding the 15-foot minimum requirement. The area of disturbance on the site will require the need for state stormwater sedimentation and stormwater permits. Much like the last cluster home project we've seen, the wastewater will be handled by two onsite TS2 engineered systems. Parking for the, the cluster homes is being provided underneath of the individual homes. DOT driveway permits will be required. The applicant is planning to install amenities for the development, including a boat ramp, docking facility, boat and trailer storage, and an area reserved as a playground. The parcel abuts a creek that directly runs out to the Pamlico Sound. Some of the development of the docking and the boat ramp will require the need for a CAMA general permit. Conditions have been added to the SGP to reflect the state permits that would be required. The Dare County Fire Marshal has reviewed the site plan. The applicant and the fire marshal have agreed to install what's called a dry hydrant along the canal, which will allow an access for fire apparatus to hook up to, to provide firefighting services to the dwellings. As part of the recombination of the parcels, there's currently an access easement that runs across the parcel that abuts Shipyard Road. As part of that process of combining the parcels, it's, you know, was the planning board's recommendation that during that process, that that access easement be relocated to their proposed paved road to provide access to adjoining property through a more of a, you know, permanent means, instead of the gravel drive that was there now. The applicants are here, the project engineers here, to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Noah. Before we ask any questions, have, I'd like to ask the applicant to step forward.
And we need to be sworn in, also.
That's exactly what I'm getting ready to do, Noah. Also need to ask the applicants, if they're up here, if they agree to the findings of fact listed in the SUP, the supporting documents on file, and the facts presented by the planning director. If you will indicate yes and state your name.
Yes, my name's Mike Nice.
All right. Are there any questions of the board of the applicant?
I have one.
Vice Chairman.
In, in the other cluster home development that was done here on Roanoke Island, there was a one-year minimum of occupancy that the developer agreed to. Would you agree to that?
That's the intent, sir, yes. I believe the minimum was six months.
It was.
Our goal was long-term residency.
Well, it stated 30 days in the, in the board, so I just wanted, I just wanted to make that, get that clear. If you're in agreement with that, we can make that part of it. Thank you.
Are there any other questions from the, from the board?
I'm just reading quickly through the fire marshal's comments, because I had heard earlier a public comment basically indicating there was massive danger in the construction of this development, but I'm not seeing that in the fire marshal comments. Am I missing something, gentlemen?
No, sir. We, that was one of the first conversations we had when we started talking about doing cluster housing on a property that doesn't have, you know, pressurized borderlines. And I met with Steve Zabansky. We talked about doing a dry hydrant.
Right.
In the canal.
Right.
And since, I think some of the comments you might be looking at are a little bit old, we've since worked out some details. I gave him some details on the dry hydrant, or at least portion of it. It's my understanding he's satisfied with what we're gonna do. He said they could get 1,500 gallons a minute out of the canal.
Right.
Using their, their pump truck.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Dan?
Gentlemen, it was our intention, when I say our, the board and the planning staff was to meet a need, and that is for workforce housing, essential housing. And, you know, I'm hoping that, you know, when anything goes on the open market, it could be any but some retirees looking to relocate here, it could be somebody looking just to improve their position, but I would hope that we're gonna see workforce people take advantage of this. Think that was probably your intent all along, when you looked at the property and knowing? I know you didn't come down here blind. You got any insight to what you would like to see happen there?
Well, we, myself and our partners, our family, we're from Williamsburg, we're, we're business owners, contractors, and we, we have the same problem everywhere. In fact, where I live in Williamsburg, 20% of the county staff... In fact, where I live in Williamsburg, 20% of the county staff lives in the county, and that, I don't think that's, you know, beneficial to any county to have their teachers living outside the locality they serve. So we see this as a good opportunity to meet that need. You know, we've been down here our whole lives visiting, even before short-term rentals were available, we came down here, and, you know, our, our goal is to see this as a permanent home for the workforce.
I hope so, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Commissioner Bateman, you have something?
I just got to ask this, did, did not the owner of this property just get up while I go and speak against us?
Can't have it both ways.
Excuse me?
Yeah.
Who was the owner that spoke against it?
Brian Marvin.
He was the prior.
Okay, okay, so he's the owner now.
He wasn't the owner, he was the prior owner, and he's got a business on, on the site.
Okay, very good, very good. Thank you for pointing that out.
I like what you've done as far as creating some amenities on there.
I think that was the intent, you know, we didn't see 59 units coming, but we can see 12, I can.
With amenities and things for playground, boat ramp.
You have a community look.
It's completely different than what they did.
Totally different. 12 units. Anyone else?
I've got something to say, Bob.
Yeah, go ahead, Jim.
I assume that you guys will retain the ownership of the land, and if so, what type of fees will there be for the homeowners, or is there going to be a homeowners association, or how's that going to be handled?
Yeah, there would be a homeowners association. The, we don't intend to maintain ownership of the homes in terms of a rental property, long-term rental, we intend to sell the homes and establish an.
But are you selling the land also?
Excuse me?
Will the land go with the homes?
The footprint of the house, yes. There will be a, there will be a homeowners association with covenants for the common area.
Correct. Okay, okay.
But do you continue to own the project?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I think we're trying to get at.
Surrounding property that we will continue to own.
Yeah.
But at some point it may revert to the HOA if it gets to that.
Correct.
I'm sorry, would you repeat that, couldn't hear you?
I said, at some point, I guess it could all be conveyed to the HOA, so eventually.
The common areas.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Clark, you had a question? Yeah, for the record, I'm Mike Robinson. Alright, what is the pleasure?
I've got some questions, please.
I thought we were finished, go ahead.
With the, with the dry hydrant, who maintains that after it's installed? That will be maintained by the HOA and inspected by the fire department. Okay, and is there plans to do a fire flow test before construction starts? Yes, there are. Yeah, we're going to do a design, run a hydraulic model on the dry hydrant itself. Steve gave me a sort of a basis for design, the way he wants it, it will have a, it will have a pipe that they can lower down into the sound, or into the canal, and we'll run the hydraulics, we'll get the pump data for the truck, run the hydraulics on the, on the, the pipe, and I think we need about 1,200 gallons a day or something. We'll come up with an ISO rating to figure out exactly what we need. But he feels like it's, there's more than enough water that could be pumped out of the canal to take care of that need. Okay.
What is the depth of that ditch?
It's the, I don't know for sure. Went out there with a stick, and then I never found it.
High-tech.
So, yeah, we're currently having a surveyor go out to do, because we've got to design the boat ramp and also design the, the drop portion of the dry hydrant, so we're going to get some survey data in.
Yeah, because that's a very important question, because that was going to be my next question, because with a dry hydrant, if we have a north wind or a south wind or whatever, and blows the water out of that canal, how low is that water?
Well, I think a north wind actually probably blows water in there, maybe, I don't know.
It's hard to tell without looking at it.
Yeah.
So that's, that's why I was looking for a hydro engineer.
Yeah, we're gonna, we'll, we'll take care of that, we're going to get all the data, survey data. This is a man's. On the east side of Roanoke Island? Yes. A north wind will blow the water into the canal. That's kind of what I was thinking, yeah.
That, that canal's depth is pretty stable, it does come up and down a little bit, but there's always water in it.
Gotcha, Jim. That's good.
Alright, anyone else have any questions of the applicant? Hearing none, what is the pleasure of the board?
Move to approve.
There's a motion on the floor by the vice chairman to approve, it's seconded by.
Couch.
Commissioner Couch. Floor is once again open for further discussion. Hearing none, those in favor, that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Alright, that brings us to item 11. And Roxanne, is Roxanne in, there she is, all the way in the back. Welcome, Roxanne.
Thank you, Commissioners, and again, I'm Roxanna Ballinger, I'm the Health Education and Community Outreach with Dare County Health and Human Services, and I co-chair the Saving Lives Task Force with Commissioner Overman. I wanted to give you an update of the fiscal year 24 opioid settlement funding plan. Okay. Okay, first, I just want to do some of these slides, just an overview. July 21, 2021, the $26 billion agreement was reached, and it focused on distributors, manufacturers, resolution of the litigation and requirements for continuing with the opioid settlement funds. Next slide. North Carolina funds, $750 million went to North Carolina, 85% of the funds went to local governments. Next slide. North Carolina Memorandum of Agreement will help those who need relief to communities impacted by opioids by supporting treatment, recovery, support, and harm reductions. Dare County is, was going to be paid approximately $3.4 million over 18 years. Next slide. Okay, our first year of the opioid settlement funding, these are how we allocated our, our first year of funds, which we are wrapping up right now. $70,000 for overdose response coordinator, which we have that position in place. $100,000 was dedicated to probation officer for recovery court. $30,000 for naloxone community distribution. $12,000 for fentanyl testing strips for community distribution. $40,000 for a mass fentanyl awareness campaign. $125,000 was allotted for community initiatives or mini-grants, and $25,000 for linkage to care and social determinants of health.
Roxanne? Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Chairman.
Roxanne, go back to that last slide, if you will. What will the mini-grants for the community initiatives, what will they be asking for for that $125,000?
This is what we did last year for the current fiscal year that we are in, and we put out an RFA to people in the community or businesses that wanted to apply for one of the dedicated strategies through the North Carolina MOA.
Gotcha, okay. Thank you. Commissioner Ross?
No, I'm just looking at the Fentanyl Kills Mass Public Awareness Campaign. Are there still people, Roxanna, in your belief, that do not understand the deadly nature of fentanyl and how incredibly toxic it is?
Yes.
Of course. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Next slide. So the mini-grants, that $125,000, these, the, this slide and the next one are the grant awardees that went to Recovery Court, Just in Case, to provide Narcan and Fentanyl test strips in a vending sheet, vending machine format, the Community Care Clinic to assist with initiating MAT, medication-assisted treatment, Room in the Inn, to train certified mental health first aid trainers, Crossroads OBX to help support their capacity to continue their work in the community with substance use disorders, Interfaith Community Outreach to help residents with needing deposits, getting into treatment, and unfortunately paying for funeral costs if that's what's needed. Excuse me. Outer Banks Yoga, which developed a evidence-based recovery yoga program, Changing Tides, which is a treatment, local treatment, inpatient treatment that we have here, Outer Banks Dare Challenge, and then a contracted peer support specialist to attend Recovery Court and work with detention center individuals and in the community. Next slide. So we, we put out a survey, just to get some feedback from stakeholder groups, over this last year, how they felt about the money, and really what were, you know, their priorities, what they felt like these funds should be used for. So we had 57 people that responded to the survey. They went out to Saving Lives Task Force, Breaking Through Task Force, Board of Health of Human Services, Town Leadership, Healthy Carolinians of the Outer Banks, Chamber, Chamber of Commerce. Next slide, please. So the, these are our top three priorities that came out of the survey of those 57 respondents. Residential treatment was clearly the most important, at almost 50% of the respondents had that down there. Funds to support an agency's capacity to help others with substance use disorder, that was the, the second highest, and then medication-assisted treatment for substance use disorder. So those were the, the three areas that came back as the most important from our stakeholders. Just some, next slide, please. So just some other comments that were written in the feedback. Suboxone Leave Behind Kits, you know, after a reversal, that actually is being done and has been being done for some time. Increase the coverage of Syringe Services Program with Wound Care Counseling on-site and handoff to treatment. Syringe Services Program, which we, we currently have that. VivaTrol cost to offset the cost of the VivaTrol injection, which is very expensive, especially for uninsured. Halfway House, under prevention, prevention and awareness in schools, education, and concerns regarding ACES, transportation, treatment, mobile crisis teams, to be quicker with their response, and more therapists and counselors. So many of these, we are very much aware of them, some of them we are already actively doing. The Suboxone Leave Behind Program, we're actually being more intentional with EMS, and EMS is going to start stocking the kits along with education materials and a fentanyl test strip kit on every single one of their trucks now, which is going to be new. The supervisors have had that on their trucks, which is about three or four trucks, but they are going to be carrying them on all their trucks now. And our two peer support specialists are going to be doing a ride-along with EMS within the next couple of weeks. So we, we anticipate that to increase. Next slide. This is our recommendation and proposal for fiscal year 24. $150,000 allotted for naloxone and fentanyl test kits for the community distribution. I just want to talk a little bit about this. Last year, the, well, the current year that we're wrapping up, we had $42,000 allotted total for naloxone kits and the fentanyl test strip kits. We went through that very, very quickly. It wasn't nearly enough what we needed. The engagement with our community partners has just increased humongously, and we clearly needed more naloxone to continue to get that out. So we have increased that to $150,000 to meet the needs. I went back and I, I looked at all the, the funding, we, we did have some additional funding to pay for naloxone and fentanyl test strips. That, those additional funding resources are going to end.
Roxanne, I, I never fail to become incredibly depressed as you present me with these realities, and you and I have talked a number of times. Is there any hope that the influx can be trimmed, stopped, reduced? Because it seems, again, my metaphor is, we live in a house, all of us, we're on the ground floor, and upstairs, a pipe's broken, and water is pouring into our living area, and we are spending all of our money on buckets, raincoats, and mops. No one has gone upstairs to stop the broken pipe. Why? I mean, I get frustrated, and I see these, when you said that wasn't nearly enough naloxone and fentanyl test kits?
Yeah.
Oh my God, I mean, I, is there any hope at all of stemming the influx, the supply, or the access to all of this poison? Or are we just basically relegated to helping and cleaning up after the fact as best we can?
Yeah, I, I understand what you're saying, it's a lot of reaction.
Yeah, everything is a reaction.
Instead of being proactive.
Raincoats, buckets, boots, and mops.
And, and a lot of things affected that, you know.
Nobody went up and fixed the pipe.
Yeah, COVID affected that.
Okay, I'm done with hearing COVID. I don't want to hear COVID again. We're past it.
Right.
What is going on?
Well, you know, we have a lot of resilience initiatives going on, you know, to help build resilience with the kids, you know, to help teach them those skills.
Yeah, because that's not on this list, there is no, that, that whole broad-scale campaign is not on this list of recommendations. That's why I asked, is there anyone who doesn't know this is poison and it kills?
Those, those initiatives are going through other grants.
Okay.
They are.
Okay.
Children Youth Partnership has a grant.
Okay.
Community resilience model trainings, there are things going on. And there is a fentanyl education campaign assembly that's going in, in with the schools. Jeff Derringer, he's on the task force board, they have the GRADE program, which is in the schools, they are beefing up their education of drug safety to possibly include fentanyl in that. So steps are being made, we are working with the schools to get more education in there, because it's certainly, it's needed. I mean, you have to do that prevention piece. You have to, you have to start there. And educating people. You have to educate them, whether they're a kid or whether they're adult, about the fentanyl. It's, it's not an easy thing, for sure.
And it doesn't come from South Carolina or New Jersey. It's coming from outside the United States, and it's coming in somehow. Is it being airdropped onto Dare County? No. Where's it coming from?
Yeah, it comes from the bigger cities that are surrounding us. Locally, that's where it's coming from.
I know. How did the bigger cities get it? Did it grow in the big cities? No. Where did it come from, Rox? You can say it out loud. It's okay. Where's it coming from?
It's coming over the border.
Ah, okay, there we go.
That's where it's coming from.
Thank you.
Roxanna, with regard to the education part of it in the schools, mention a little bit about what Roman Gabriel is doing.
Yeah. He's held three assemblies at the high schools last month and to kick off a fentanyl education and a pledge. So, the kids will sign a pledge, basically, you know, committing that they're not going to take pills from someone unless it comes from a pharmacist, you know, or their parents or a doctor. You shouldn't take pills from anybody. You know, you don't get pills off of TikTok and social media. That's where a lot of the kids are getting it. It's easy to get through the mail. So, he has started a pledge where kids will commit to this, that they will talk to their parents if they have questions, if they want to know more about pills. And so, that's the beginning of that. And then he also has online tools for parents that they can use on his website to help educate them and give them some tools.
Yeah, this is, this is an important program that is, that is just, just really getting going and will be effective, we think, in the coming school year particularly. But the education of the kids is something that was the nexus of the Saving Lives Task Force by its old name originally. And of course, it's expanded its scope quite a bit in the last several years. But that has always been a foundation of what we wanted to do and try to do, is always likened it to plugging a hole in a dike when the water's coming through. And getting that, getting that dike plugged, it starts with, with kids. Certainly, certainly by the time they're in middle school, that dam needs to be plugged up. And we do that through education, continual outreach, and that's, that's how we have to kind of, kind of go with that.
The other piece that I would mention too, with the Fentanyl Kills Campaign, we are working with the Coastline Times to, they are going to be doing some geo-fencing. And essentially, what that is, is they target certain restaurants or businesses, and then we target the messaging for that area. So, we can't legally geo-fence schools, but we can geo-fence the rec center, for instance. And there are kids in the rec center. So, we can send prevention messaging through that geo-fencing. So, that is another way that we're targeting the youth and adults with the geo-fencing.
So, is there ways to do these type programs in the schools where the kids are?
You can't do schools, it's just illegal to do schools. You can't do that.
So, you can't go to a school and say, "Don't use drugs"?
You can't do the geo-fencing with schools. Because that was, of course, the first thing that comes to everyone's mind, you know, well, you need to do the geo-fencing over the schools. You can't do that. That came out very quickly. So, we are looking to the Fentanyl Education Campaign that Commissioner Overman just spoke of.
Steve, what you wind up having to do with the schools is, in essence, creating a partnership with the schools, and they have to approve of whatever. And that's one of the things that Roman Gabriel has been working on, is to get, work through the school administration and get them on board. And it's, and it's not like they're not on board to do it.
Well, yeah.
They have to take kind of, kind of step-by-step understanding of exactly what's being done. But, but that is a really good step in that direction.
Thank you.
The school resource officers too, like I mentioned, with the GREAT program, they are going to be incorporating more education in what they're doing in the schools. And we're also working with the school nurses to hopefully where we can get in there and do more education with the schools on an ongoing kind of basis. We do have our Peer Power Program, which has been going on for many years, which does have drug education in that curriculum, too. So, we have the $150,000 for naloxone and fentanyl test strips with the community. $60,000 for community initiatives. You know, last year, we had 100, this current year, we're finishing up, we had 125,000. This year, you know, we have to budget on the money that we know that we have right now. There is more opioid settlement money coming down, but we don't know when we're going to get it and exactly how much that is. So, as the, as time goes on, we'll have more funds that we can work with. Right now, we have $60,000 for community initiatives. We'll continue to pay for the two positions and then $50,000 for linkage to care for the Dare County Detention Center. They have had a grant for two and a half years that's going to be ending June 30th that has given a lot of support for linkage to care, social determinants of health, getting people into treatment. That is going to be going away. So, we wanted to continue to help the detention center continue some of the work that they're doing in there. And that's where that comes from. And that's it. Bless you have some more questions.
Anyone have questions?
Yeah, you, you mentioned vending machines earlier, and I kind of didn't stop you then. We're putting vending machines with Narcan and fentanyl test strips? Where are we putting vending machines with Narcan and fentanyl test strips?
The, the person who submitted that application in the RFA when we put it out, that is something that this person wanted to do. We currently do not have any vending machines for naloxone and fentanyl test strips in Dare. They do have it in other counties, at larger counties. So, we thought we would go there and see how that worked out. A lot of questions came up about it. This person never ratified the award grant for the money to purchase the naloxone vending machine, so nothing happened with that grant money that she was awarded.
God, I don't know whether I'd feel good or bad about that. You know, I just had this image of vending machines at the Outlets Mall. Get your naloxone and fentanyl strips here.
Well, you know, it brings up, you know, somebody has to maintain that machine. Somebody has to make sure it's stocked.
Well, that's where my questions were going. It doesn't just exist on its own.
Right, it doesn't.
And then, oh, yeah, honey, yeah, George and Johnny. That's the naloxone machine. What the heck is that, mommy?
Mention what Jesse Ruby is doing.
Yeah. Jesse Ruby is one of our two peer support specialists. Jesse is all over the county, working with businesses and organizations and people, getting naloxone out and fentanyl test kits out, more than we have ever gotten out. That's why the, the numbers with naloxone and fentanyl test kits has just gone up so much. You know, part of the Fentanyl Kills Campaign, we are working with businesses to purchase receptacles that would go into the restaurant or business, wherever they wanted that to be, that would hold a naloxone kit and fentanyl test strip. So, the person who wanted that could grab those items with no stigma attached, you know? Nobody's going to ask them any questions. If they wanted it for them or they wanted it for their friend, they could easily do it. Essentially, that's really filling the same role as the vending machine, except the vending machine, you really would have upkeep and monitoring of the machine itself. This is on a smaller scale and will really serve the same purpose, and we'll be able to accommodate more restaurants and businesses, localities that wanted that.
Additionally, we, we're working with the lifeguards that are on the beach to try to get them all to have naloxone in their, in their kits. Then the first meeting that we had with a group in Kill Devil Hills, they indicated that, yeah, we have, we have some naloxone. Turns out, it was six years old. And it was the old method. It was the injection method. So, we updated their naloxone so that they would have the modern nasal version. But I think it's, with the, unfortunately, it's kind of ludicrous to think that those kind of things don't go on, on the beach. When, when, when we've got beach that's 100 miles long, it's going on somewhere and they're going to need it ultimately. So, that's, that's another area that we're trying to work on to, to help protect what's going on in Dare County.
Yeah, we've actually connected up with Kitty Hawk lifeguards also. They actually have naloxone now. So, we've established that relationship and hopefully expand to the whole beach, you know, with all the towns.
Any more questions? Roxanna, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Item number 12 is a, I'm sorry?
My agenda says we have to approve the proposal for the FY 2024.
Oh, okay. Sorry. You may have a different paper than I got. This was kind of handed to me and said, "Do it." Okay, all right. So, we need a, a motion to approve the 2024, that we'll call it a budget for the expenditure of the opioid funds.
That was the last point of the presentation, right? The page that had those recommended items?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
All right. I have a motion, you have a second.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. Motion passes. Okay, next up is item 12, is the presentation regarding Bright Speed and service delivery.
My chair is Drew Pearson. I'd like to introduce Steve Brewer from Bright Speed to come up and share some information about Bright Speed's efforts to improve redundancy and resiliency. Reason I brought him to you is we have a lot of 911 outages on Hatteras Island. Commissioner Calhoun knows him well. Bright Speed is the only fiber provider that runs down the Outer Banks to Hatteras Island. I've been engaging with Steve for at least six months, if not longer, to try to work, to try to improve that capability. And Steve has brought a couple of his technical experts out with him as well, and he's also going to share some information about other things that Bright Speed's doing to update services out here in the Outer Banks.
Thank you.
So, with that, Steve?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. As Drew indicated, my name is Steve Brewer with Bright Speed. I'm Director of Government Affairs. With me today, I've got Rick Gould, who is the Manager of Regional Operations, and Steve Parks, who is the Supervisor of Regional Operations. So, they will serve as my subject matter expert as we get into some, if you have any technical questions that I'm unable to help you with. But I'm delighted to be here today. I have done many presentations since the assets were sold from Lumen, the parent company of Century Link, over to Bright Speed, and you're to be commended for your work in your community. This is one of the most thorough and engaging meetings that I've been a part of, so you should be commended for that. So, let me give you a bit of history, if you will, regarding the transition over to Bright Speed. Just prior to what you're seeing on the slide in front of you, the summer of 2021, Lumen, the parent company of Century Link, and Apollo Global Management entered into an agreement to sell local assets in 20 states to include the state of North Carolina. Apollo Global Management, if you're not familiar with them, they're a very large private investment firm. Apollo Global Management started a company you now know as Bright Speed, and in March of 2022, they announced that Charlotte, North Carolina would be the corporate headquarters for the new corporation. And again, this is a brand-new company, new executive leadership. Vast majority of our executive leadership team are former Verizon executives who built out Verizon's FiOS network. In October of 2022, we, we actually got the keys to the car, if you will. Those transactions take a lot of regulatory approval, so it took a little over a year to get all of that work done. But October 3rd, to be exact, of 2022, Bright Speed actually owned the former Century Link or Lumen assets. And as of, sorry, I need these reading glasses to read the small screen here. But I, as of May of this year, Bright Speed has announced that it plans to build 800,000 fiber passings in the state of North Carolina alone. That's what we will do with our own investment dollars. Anything that we achieve by way of broadband grants will only serve to grow that number. And thus far, we've been approved for an approximately, an additional 45,000 fiber passings through the state of North Carolina's broadband grant program.
Steve, I don't know what a fiber passing is.
I'm sorry. A fiber passing would be passing your premise or bringing fiber to your doorstep.
Okay.
So, it is your home, essentially, your home or business.
Got it.
Since, since we got the keys to the car, Bright Speed's added 200 additional call center agents, and now we are answering the phone on average in less than one minute. And we've also hired 51 additional service technicians, and many of them have completed their training, but some are still in training and will be online here in fairly short order. As a result of the, the work that we've been doing to improve service levels, we've seen our mean time to repair number improved by 32%. Our mean time to install number has improved by 20%. And again, the, the promise of the company or the, excuse me, the desire of Bright Speed is to build as many fiber passings as possible. So, certainly, we are overbuilding a significant portion of our traditional copper network where DSL services have historically been provided. With the transition over to fiber, fiber's not stolen. That has not been a real significant issue in Dare County, but unfortunately, in many of our other communities, fiber, or excuse me, copper theft has been a significant issue, given the value of copper and the, I'll say, the recycle market, if you will. And when that happens, it takes a large number of customers out, prevents them from being able to reach 911 in many cases, so that's been a real issue. That's not a problem with fiber. Fiber is far less impacted by weather. The new fiber deployment technology that we are using, it is far quicker than has been used to deploy fiber in the past. And subsequently, because it's quicker to deploy, it is also quicker to repair. So, we're very excited about that. And then, on the horizon, in this particular county, we were successful winning a small great grant award. We also have some ARDOF, Rural Digital Opportunity builds that we will be doing. But on the horizon, there is a, another state grant program that is funded with federal dollars but administered by the state called CAB, Completing Access to Broadband. The interesting thing about CAB and why that's important here is that the speed threshold between the last grant round and the upcoming grant round has changed. Previously, if an area had service of 25 and 3, it was not eligible for the last grant program. This, the, the upcoming grant program, which should be announced in the next 60 days or so, has a speed threshold of 100 by 20. So, we're going to find some more locations in this county.
100 down, 20 up.
That's right, 100 in, 20 up. We're going to find some more locations in this county that are eligible in the upcoming grant rounds that were not previously eligible, so that's, that's good news. And then, finally, later this, later this month, we're supposed to hear from the federal government, the, the next round of broadband grant funding from the federal government. The federal government has a $42.5 billion budget for its next round, and that's the BEAD program that you see at the bottom of your screen there. North Carolina stands to get somewhere in the neighborhood of a North Carolina stands to get somewhere in the neighborhood of a billion dollars. And the goal there is to really get everyone to universal coverage by way of at least 100 by 20. Now, we'll note, the grants or the fiber that we are installing, be it with our own investment dollars or through any grant programs, will immediately offer speeds of at least 1 gig by 1 gig. So that's basically 1,000 meg by 1,000 meg. And truthfully, we anticipate being able to scale that to as high as 10 gig as the market needs necessary. As you're certainly familiar, there are some challenges in providing services in Dare County. And with the transition to Bright Speed, I have been working with the North Carolina Department of Transportation. I've been working with Drew, Mr. Alton, regarding coordination efforts here in Dare County. Obviously, when some storms come in, it often leads to NC DOT needing to do sand scraping, if you will, off the highway. A lot of time, those storms result in our fiber being exposed and then being damaged during the sand removal process. We are far better coordinated with North Carolina Department of Transportation than our predecessor company was and also here within Dare County in order to ensure that when we anticipate sand removal, we've got crews ready to go in the event the fiber is damaged. And quite honestly, in hopes to prevent the damage of the fiber. The most significant item that we have before us, though, is the opportunity to close the fiber loop along the outer banks. Right now, there's fiber down to Hatteras. And then there's a very small piece of fiber submarine cable from Hatteras over to Ocracoke. But there is no connection from Ocracoke back to the mainland. So if that fiber is cut anywhere along the highway, you're basically sectioning off a portion of the community from services. We have applied for a federal grant with NTIA. Honestly, we thought we would have word by now. Unfortunately, those grants have not yet been announced. But it's about a $13 million grant to put submarine cable from Ocracoke over to the mainland and put a bigger piece of fiber between Hatteras and over to Ocracoke, thereby closing the fiber loop, if you will. So if a portion of the fiber, as long as there's not multiple cuts, if a portion of the fiber is damaged, we can essentially reroute the traffic in the other direction, thereby keeping all services available. And then finally, another alternative that we're exploring is resurrecting microwave towers that would enable voice traffic in the event of a fiber outage or emergency services. It would enable voice traffic to continue to flow, which is particularly important for 911 services. We've been a little bit delayed in getting estimates to put the microwave links in. We've had some osprey that have nested in our towers. And we have to wait until nesting season is complete in order to.
Did you guys put up a sign, no nesting?
I have to ask Rick about that. Maybe he can.
Drew?
Help us there.
You just don't go up there removing osprey. They'll make a pretzel out of you.
But please know that that work is in the works, if you will. And we look forward to providing you an update in the near future on that. This slide that I have before you now shows the broadband deployments that have been done or that we're looking to do in Dare County. And I apologize, I don't want to get the numbers wrong. And this slide is very tiny on the screen here. But we'll start with the award build. So the Great Grant process has an award of 241 locations in your county that we will deploy fiber by way of a grant from the North Carolina Department of Information Technology, again referred to as the Great Grant. It's about a half a million dollar grant in this community. During that build-out process, though, we do anticipate passing more than 241 locations. And I don't have an exact number for that for you yet. The grants have just recently been, or the contracts associated with this grant have just recently been executed. But as that work begins, again, we will pass more than 241 locations. Many of the locations that are along that fiber route were previously not eligible for grant funding. However, if we get close enough to them, we will serve them. So that number, that 241, I expect it to go up quite a bit. You will see the next number, it's a little over 7,500. The red dots labeled as a plan build, that's part of our own private investment dollars that were, there are no grant programs at all, we would still intend to build there. And that is in the Nags Head and the Collington community. You'll notice just above that, there is a box that indicates that the Kill Devil Hills Plan Build is on hold. Unfortunately, we ran into an issue there that Kill Devil Hills, a couple of years ago, put in a new local ordinance requiring all new construction to go underground. The cost associated with putting that entire build underground has made it cost prohibitive. I have met with the community. Unfortunately, to date, we've not been able to work out a resolution. Again, there are other providers utilizing the poles in that community. That was our desire to utilize the poles where poles existed. We have no desire to resurrect new or additional poles. But we would like to utilize existing poles in the community.
So KDH has existing poles already in use.
Yes, sir.
That you would use to bring 7,500 points of contact or access points to broadband?
Fiber to the home or fiber to the business? Yes, sir.
And the Kill Devil Hills leadership has said no?
That is correct. That is correct. So we have decided to.
I'm just wondering, was there logic presented to you? Or was there simply no without a logic or explanation?
So I believe it is due to, I would say, storm resilience and I'll say a beautification or aesthetics.
The poles are there?
Yes, sir, they are.
There's other users, there are other users on the poles?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
Okay, Steve, sorry.
Yes, sir. We would love to, we would love to work out a solution there and be able to build those additional locations. The Nags Head and Collington build portion of that build, that was all designed to be about a 15,000 unit build, the Collington and Nags Head portions will proceed. Still working to get it, honestly, our hope was to have completed that build before your vacation season, right now. But we will now work that back into the mix and complete those two builds.
I got a question.
Yes, sir.
So you got to go through Kill Devil Hills to get to Collington, you knew that?
Yes, sir.
So if the Kill Devil Hills is not going to let you do it, how are you going to get to Collington?
The, that particular portion of the fiber will have to go underground.
Okay.
So with that, you will see there is a, there's a Bright Speed ARDOF location. That's a federal grant program that provided for 96 additional fiber locations in your community. And then I'm happy to announce that our proof-of-concept build, which is in the Mantio area, Mantio and Wanchees area, a little over 3,300 units. That, Bright Speed actually built to those areas prior to getting the keys to the car, if you will, prior to the purchase being complete. That was the proof-of-concept build for the new company. So first in flight, first in fiber, at least from Bright Speed. And really happy to be a part of that. So as I mentioned earlier, the speed threshold associated with the upcoming grant round has changed to 100 by 20. And our mapping team has recently gotten access to the CostQuest data that will be, that will play a very large role in determining the next round of broadband grant opportunities. And with that, they have identified in the Mans Harbor-Stumpy Point area approximately 467 locations that we believe will be grant-eligible in the future. And we don't get to make that determination, but based upon our evaluation, we think that's the number. Ultimately, the North Carolina Department of Information Technology will publish a map that identifies the eligible locations based upon the requirements associated with the grant program. So you may see that number go up a bit, you may see it come down just a bit. But again, we just recently gained access to CostQuest data. It is there, a company that the federal government is using to identify eligible locations, not just here in North Carolina, but across the nation, associated with the upcoming BEED funding that's about to be announced. Well, there's going to be a CAB round, grant round, in between now and the BEED round. And the speed threshold requirements are essentially going to be the same. So again, we think, right now as we stand, there's approximately 467 locations in that area that are eligible. We may find some additional locations in the county as well.
Steve, before you leave this.
I've got a question. I live in Mans Harbor.
Yes, sir.
And we don't even get good cellphone service from Verizon over here. And I mean, our phone service is horrible. Our service for the TVs and stuff through broadband is horrible. And yet, we're always like on the bottom of the list to get anything done. Is it only the grant that's holding you up? Or, you know, you're going to put in a Submariner cable to Ocracoke? Ocracoke's not even in our county, not to say that they shouldn't get it. But, and then one all the way across to the mainland? Why don't you drop one across the sound and bring us some good broadband?
Well, for one, the submarine cable from Ocracoke to Cedar Island is designed to basically complete a fiber loop for the entirety of the outer banks. So, you know, that is particularly important. Regarding the Mans Harbor-Stumpy Point locations that we've identified, when we had the, when we applied for the Great Grant for the area, there were, there was DSL service in the area that exceeded the speed threshold at that time. That has changed. The speed threshold now differs. And there will be, with the upcoming broadband grant program, there will be an opportunity to bring fiber to the home to those communities.
And what's your estimated time on that? I mean, are you talking a year, are you talking 10 years, what?
So the, we expect the CAB program to be announced within the next 60 days. North Carolina Department of Information Technology controls that. But we are most definitely on the cusp of that grant round opening up. Once that occurs, the, and the county will have a much greater say in the areas of opportunity than they did in the Great Grant. It's just how the requirements associated with the program are written. You will essentially do an, if you are interested as a county to participate in the CAB program, you will essentially offer up an RFP and identify the areas of concern. Now, those areas of concern do have to be eligible areas associated with the requirements of the program. And based on our evaluation, we've identified areas in Stumpy's Point and Mans Harbor. But ultimately, North Carolina Department of Information Technology will have that say. And you will get to identify, or you will get to put forward an RFP for multiple providers to potentially respond to.
But Steve, just.
We'll even let you put them on our overhead lines.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. So Steve, just a question too regarding that. I was asking you about Mans Harbor as well. But the dots that you call grant-eligible, and getting back to some of what Commissioner Tobin was asking you. You said it's going, that CAB grant's going to be available, you think, within a couple of months?
Yes, sir.
So when that grant is available, does that mean you all can add that to your awarded bill or planned bill?
It will be another application process. It's a completely separate grant, and it will be another application process. It's my understanding, and again, this has not been completely rolled out by NC DIT, but it's my understanding, this will be more of a rolling grant period. With the Great Grant, they opened it up at a specific time and they closed it at a specific time. But because this grant has a lot more community direction associated with it, you as the community will announce to NC DIT, we're ready to do this and we'd like to do it by date X, and we'd like to, you know. So you will have a lot more direction on the timing and the areas associated with that than was possible with the Great Grant program.
Just another question on that, and sort of an extension of that. You show grant-eligible dots going out 64 toward Alligator River. And they're interspersed somewhat with the ARDOF.
Yes, sir.
Grants. So how does, how does that work? And I think you and I talked about ARDOF grants two years ago, maybe something along that line. But there was no time deal associated with that. But how does that work, that the purples are intermixed with the orange?
The ARDOF program is a federally funded program. It comes with a, it is a, it was a national program, and it comes with a six-year window.
Right.
So now, I will tell you, if, it only makes logical business sense to me that if we were to participate in your CAB program and be successful and those locations were, are indeed determined as being eligible, that we would do it all at once. I mean, we've got crews there in the same proximity. It would only make sense to take care of them in one sweep.
And everything that you do henceforth is going to be fiber?
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Is Eastlake, because I know I'm going to get the question, is Eastlake going to be included in this?
That's here, that's where we were just talking about.
I.
On that Stumpy Point loop?
Okay, yeah, if it is, if it is in those areas, yes. It's certainly something that we believe is eligible. Again, this is our preliminary review of what we believe is the same data, but we don't have the ultimate say. I do need to caveat that. NC DIT, North Carolina Department of Information Technology, will ultimately determine the exact locations down to, it's my understanding, down to the street-level address as to what is eligible for the upcoming program. We believe these are going to be included, based on our evaluation of what we think is going to be the same data that they use.
Okay.
And just one other question, Steve, regarding.
It's a little bit bigger map there, sorry.
That's okay, regarding Roanoke Island. I had a conversation with a gentleman, it's been several weeks ago now, that somehow the Skico community got, or Skico area, got a little bit overlooked in terms of when things were being run down to Wanchees. They just kind of blew by Skico. Do you have any information on that specifically?
I am not aware of that, but I'm happy to have a conversation.
Okay.
How can you? At the permits, we were trying to get across 64, and our permits weren't, we weren't having any luck with the permits.
So I'm sorry, I'm not following you on that.
There wasn't enough fiber capacity going down to Wanchees. So original plan was to go all the way down, what's that highway?
It's 345.
Yeah, so our original plan was to go the new fiber all the way down to Wanchees. We had a problem with the permits, so they used existing fiber. And there was only four fibers. That existing fiber took us into Wanchees, but we had to bypass Skico. We're going back and we're looking at trying to pick Skico back up. There are, there is fiber going down the pole line. We just have to figure out how to light that up.
Well, I don't follow that technically, but.
We're looking at it, we're looking at it. I've got a guy that's looking at.
Okay, so you mentioned that there were four lines going to Wanchees. Does that, will those four lines take care of Wanchees' needs?
Yes, oh, yes.
Okay.
These are fiber lines. Yes.
Well, that, okay, well, that's.
Far greater.
Yeah, okay. So what you would do is would split off of that to go into Skico?
Correct.
And what is the holdup on that?
Designed. So we ended up going all the way down to, we had some huts similar to the one that's kind of across the street from Skico. There's a little hut almost.
Yes.
Yeah, so we have similar facilities like that down in Wanchees. And these fibers go all the way to those facilities. So we're trying to backfeed from Wanchees back up to that Skico section.
Gotcha, okay, thank you.
We do have fiber going down Skico Road, it's just not lit yet.
You have fiber going down Skico? You have fiber going down Skyco, but it's not-
Not lit.
It's not lit, it's not turned on.
There's no light on it.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
And, you know, please know that I have a constant conversation with Mr. Pearson and Mr. Alton, and I will be happy, I will be delighted to come back to your community and provide you an update in the future. I, I always enjoy, I, I'm a fisherman, and I always enjoy heading inspiration.
I, I guess, the, the, one of the bottom-line things, and, and one of the reasons that Drew has been having a lot of conversation with you over the past several months, is, is in emergency situations with regard to Hatteras Island. So, and I think the microwave thing was brought up as a, as a possibility of this. I might expand on that just a little bit more.
And I might.
Can I, can I just ask the question? Mention the Osprey, the way in the determination whether or not you can do microwave, Osprey nesting season ended in vain. What's the timeline to get out, get the bids, and once you're able to make a determination whether you can do it or not? How long would it take to install a microwave solution? So we have redundant ability to make 911 calls off of Hatteras Island, back to our 911 center. That would be, that would be my question, sir.
Yes.
The Osprey nesting season should be over, and what, what is it gonna take?
Frank, do you have anything to offer?
Yeah. The microwave shot that we have from Ocracoke over to, to Cedar Key was damaged during Hurricane Dorian, and our previous company elected not to do the repairs that were necessary. And we have a company that's going to do a drone flyover of the antenna system on Cedar Key and give us a quote. The Osprey is what delayed that. That and the location of Cedar Key, it's not a very-
So where are your towers?
There's one on Ocracoke, and there's one on Cedar Key.
Okay, so, but that tower would serve Hatteras Island?
It would provide a backup for voice, emergency voice services. We're only, it, it can do like 1,800 voice, simultaneous voice calls at a time, but nothing compared to a, a fiber, you know? If you had a, a, a small business, something like that, it, it's not gonna be made.
Can, can any of that be dedicated to emergency services?
It, it can be, yes. And that, and that's our plan, is to work with emergency management.
Does that help you, Drew? Does that do what you need? Come up here, Drew, where everybody can hear you, please.
My chair, it, it will. But knowing when it's gonna happen is the important part. Because, you know, we're moving into the highest tourist season. If we have a cut in the fiber today, there's gonna be 100,000 people without the ability to make 911 calls on Hatteras Island, back to, to 911 center and not be able to get that help. So I do know that the, the Osprey season slowed them down, that the infrastructure is there. I just truly hope that it's the, the, there's some vigor in getting out there and getting those estimates, and reestablishing that microwave link, microwave link that would serve not just Dare County residents and visitors on Hatteras Island, but also those that we dispatch for on, on Ocracoke, and getting that information back to the 911 centers. That's integral in making sure that we have a safe community going into the future.
Is there not a microwave tower going down 264 that could, that could feed Hatteras Island?
Yeah, Chairman, I'm sure I'm not an expert on that.
These guys are.
It's their, it's their equipment, it's their equipment, and we're just trying to make sure that they can get their equipment and pump it running.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, there was, and it was de-commed a number of years ago. That there's no equipment anymore. Ocracoke and Cedar Key are the only two working, we hope they still work, microwave, equipment-wise.
Thank you. Well, just want to get some clarification on that. Thank you.
But again, keep, keep in mind that those are designed to, to be backup, to provide more resiliency. If, assuming we're successful with our application associated with submarine cable, that will, that's a real game changer.
But still, we're talking years out.
For the deployment of the submarine cable, I do suspect that to take a couple of years to deploy. I don't know the specifics from the contract.
What I wanna get to is, is there something that we can do within the next month or so that will create a voice backup, at least?
It's, it's gonna determine, or depend on how much damage is done to that antenna on Cedar Key.
To the mic, the one on Cedar Key. Let's say that system is, is non-reparable. Is there another one that you could put up?
That's gonna take longer.
That would take longer?
Yep.
More lo, longer than the subcable?
Yes. Uh, no, no. Still shorter time periods, but it'll take longer than-
Right. I can't, I can't stress enough how much we need a backup system in Hatteras quickly. Not two or three years from now. I'm talking months.
Yep.
If not weeks, preferably days. But that's the situation we're in.
Yes, sir.
So I could wrap my head around this thing. So, I don't remember, and Dan, I asked Danny earlier, that we had this much losing 911 than in Hatteras services in the past, up until, so you're saying that Dorian is the reason that we lost the services?
Yeah.
Okay. So, and before, we had the microwave services that backed us up, correct?
Right.
Why can't we put those services on cell towers? There's cell towers in Red Anthony. They're all over the place.
Yes, so, all the cell towers, or I'll say the majority of the cell towers that are down through that section of the Outer Banks, they use our fiber as, to get off the Outer Banks. So cell towers used to go cellular, tower to tower to tower. Now they have connections with fiber that goes to the tower, down, and then to the world across fiber. And we're the only provider down there right now.
So why can't you use it if you're the, if you-
We do, but when it gets cut, it isolates it.
Okay.
I just wanna back up here. The fact that you communicated to DOT, the past two instances we had of cable cuts, was issues with, like you said, storm repair, and also, my understanding was, when they were doing something on the highway. But the fact that this has been communicated to DOT to use a, a little bit extra more diligence, I mean, if that's what we have to operate with in the immediate future, you know, that, that, that's a, that's a good thing. You know, those DOT guys, they do amazing work. And, you know, but as you say, when, when the sand blows, I mean, it's a dynamic coastal process. And if there's cable exposed, you're dealing with a guy on a front-end loader, and it's gonna get severed. But as long as they've been made aware of it, I'm, I'm hoping that we can use a little more diligence going forward. It's kinda in DOT's court.
I, I do believe that process is in place, and that you will see far better coordination than has likely been experienced in the past. And, and we're also in, in contact with this gentleman for the same purpose.
Mr. Peterson, I just wanted to share with you, I've tried my best to work with some of the cellular companies, in particular FirstNet AT&amp;T, to try to encourage them to put satellite dishes on their cell towers, so that when the cable is lost, the cable is cut, that it goes up to a satellite and comes back into the network, so you don't lose the ability to make at least a mobile call. And anybody who has 91, has a, has a mobile phone, doesn't matter who your provider is, if there's a cell signal out there, you can make a 911 call. I have not had any luck with the mobile service providers to establish satellite capability on any of their cell towers on the Outer Banks. I, I will continue to beat the drum. I will continue to encourage that industry to provide a secondary route, because the fiber is only one way to get there. If they're able to put cell towers on their satellite antennas on their cell towers, they could do it after a storm, that's what they do. I just don't see it as a business investment to do it, to provide it at this point in time for us and our community. But still beating that drum.
The, the best long-term fix is the submarine cable that will, that will basically complete the fiber loop all along the Outer Banks back to the mainland. So if the fiber is cut in any one location, you simply reverse the direction of the traffic, and you're able to complete it. That is the best long-term fix. And we do have, quite frankly, I, I completely expected to be before you today, telling you whether or not we were successful with that application. We thought we were going to hear May, April, back to March, nothing yet, but I, I think we're very, very close to hearing on that.
Thank you, gentlemen. Anything, any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, gentlemen, next item up is item 13, Hatters Harbor Emergency Dredging. There is a resolution requesting emergency dredging, and-
Good afternoon.
Have at it.
Yep. So at last month's Waterways Commission meeting, they motioned to request the Board of Commissioners submit an emergency dredging request for essentially the area right outside Hatters Harbor, near the Breakwater, Rollinson Channel. It's starting to narrow, and as background, this channel is only allowed to be pipeline dredged, which is why there's emergency request.
What, what does that mean, Barton? Because we gotta Miss Katie, but apparently Miss Katie cannot do this.
No. We, it, it's currently not permitted yet. We're in the process of-
Again, for those of us, and, and I appreciate, Steve, you and Jim probably are most familiar with it. I don't know pipeline dredging from pipe cleaners. So what does that mean, and why can't we use Miss Katie?
Essentially, yeah, it's, it's a whole different process. Essentially, like, they're pipeline, kinda like how we do beach nourishment. They're pipeline onto a bird island or something of that sort.
Right.
Instead of like the Miss Katie, you hopper dredge it.
Right.
And then you ride it offshore, drop it.
Right.
And so, that area of the channel is only pipeline dredging, is only allowed.
And that's because the other hopper dredging cannot be done?
Yep. But we are, we're looking at-
No, no, cannot be done physically because it's impossible due to the water.
No, no, not physically, just perm, permits wise.
Per, permit? So, so somebody said no, but we can physically do it? Am I getting that right?
Yes.
But we need emergency, and we haven't got emergency?
If, if we submit a emergency request to the Corps, they can go to the agencies, and which allows them, instead of pipeline dredging, they can bring the merdern or the merit out to actually hopper dredge it.
It's the process.
Yep, it's, it's the process they take. They cannot just send the merdern in there to hopper dredge without a letter from Dare County, and also approval, approval from the agencies. And hopefully in seven months from now, we'll have, the Miss Katie can go right in there and, and hit that show.
Why, why seven months from now?
It takes the agencies about six months to give us a, a permit. Plus, there's always some-
A permit, again, I apologize. A permit for what?
Dredging, yep.
But the merdern can dredge tomorrow. The Miss Katie takes seven months.
They don't need a permit.
The Corps doesn't need the, need a permit. They just need approval.
Just blow my brains out, guys.
This is how they've been dredging the east side of the ferry route the last few months.
Yeah, Jim.
Rob, we're working on that up in the legislature. We're, we're gonna try to get a blanket permit.
Yeah, honest to God, Jim, that makes such perfect sense.
For the whole dang state.
Yeah, thank you. This is, I was struggling with Bobby over the weekend. Trying to figure out why, why do we have a Miss Katie if we're having to jump through all these hoops? And then I just hear there's more hoops. Oh, for God's sake.
And the Miss, the Miss Katie can sidecast also. The only thing it is not, it is, is not a pipeline dredge.
Yeah, but again, the rules of nature didn't dictate pipeline. Somebody wrote it on this paper. And it can rewrite the paper and say you can.
That's right.
Okay, thank you, Jim. Thank you.
You bet.
And so, there is already funding that we have transferred over to, for the connector channel, you know, the part that kinda gets the boaters out to the, to the ocean. The Waterways Commission did a motion to have those funds, if, if you allow, shifted over to this part of the channel, to the Hatters Harbor area. So it's not any funds coming out of fund balance, it's already the funds the Corps has. And the reason why they'd be looking to use our money is they have expended all their federal funds in the Rollinson Channel down there in Hatters Inlet. So they've been, they need to be using Dare County funds. So if you all do approve, I just need you all to adopt the resolution, and, and I can read that since Bobby's not here.
Yeah, read that into the record, please.
Okay. Resolution requesting emergency dredging in Rollinson Channel, whereas the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers has authority to pipeline dredge Rollinson Channel adjacent to Hatters Harbor, and whereas shoaling in Rollinson Channel near the Hatters Harbor Breakwater has significantly reduced channel width and led to unsafe conditions, and whereas the Coast Guard uses Hatters Harbor as a safe haven for vessels during search and rescue cases, and whereas approximately 40 local charter vessels plus transient vessels travel through this channel to access Hatter, Hatters Inlet in the Pamlico Sound, and whereas multiple offshore fishing tournaments are hosted out of Hatters Harbor, and therefore be resolved that the Dare County Board of Commissioners formally request that emergency authorization be granted to allow the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers shall draft dredges to address shoaling in Rollinson Channel near the Hatters Harbor Breakwater. This, the 5th of June, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
How much, how much money are you talking about?
They essentially, with a travel day, they, they anticipate dredging, I do have an update on that. They anticipate dredging to take one day, but they will charge us for a travel day, as, as you're familiar with. So it will be around that $100,000 mark. The merdern 24-hour is $46,000 or so, I think, for a 24-hour merdern.
We're talking about 25 for us, and 75 on the state. That's the math.
Yep.
Yeah, so is this, is this resolution including you're asking for the 25,000, too?
Yeah, essentially, I guess, yeah, shifting, yeah, the funds over from the connector channel over to this part of Rollinson, yes.
Okay, okay.
Any other discussion? All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Barton. Appreciate it. Item 14 is a budget amendment and capital project ordinance for Recreation Pickleball Courts. David?
Just at your last meeting, you instructed staff to proceed with a $500,000 project. This is the formality of adopting a budget amendment for the general fund to move $500,000 over to the Capital Projects Fund. Capital Projects Fund's revenues from, transfer from the general fund, and then $500,000 for engineering, construction, and everything. So it's approved budget amendment and a capital project ordinance.
Right. Motion to approve.
Have a motion, we have a second. I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Dave. All right. Item 15 is a professional services contract for the creation of pickleball courts. Dustin?
So as David just mentioned to you all, and you all just approved the creation of the capital project ordinance and the budget amendment, what's in front of you is the professional services contract submitted by Albemarle and Associates for their construction or contract administration for the creation of these pickleball courts. Their cost was $41,775, and that is part of that overall $500,000 budget for the pickleball project.
And that will be for wherever we, we-
Yes, sir.
Find somewhere to put them?
That's right. There's a proposed location near the, gosh, I'm gonna butcher this name, Stratterfield Atlantic. That's the one, right behind PetSmart, is, is where they're looking right now.
And I think Bobby has got at least one other, his own line he's looking into. I think he's having a meeting on that Wednesday.
Yeah, I, I talked to Bobby and said, are we premature in approving this? And he said, we can approve it for, to be expedient or to expedite, but he will hold until we know where and what.
Right.
So that's, that's why I was willing to do it.
Exactly.
Okay.
I'm glad to hear that, Rob.
I'm sorry, Jim?
I said, I'm glad to hear that, because there's some real issues with one of those sites kinda cramping into the soccer fields.
Yeah, there's a, there's an opportunity that we'll know a little bit more about on, on, after his meeting on Wednesday.
Right.
Yeah.
We've gotta approve, Mr. Vice Chairman, if you would, sir, I'll, I'll approve the professional services contract to Albemarle and authorize a accounting manager to sign it.
Thank you.
We gotta start.
We have a motion, we have a second. Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes. Item sixteen is the consent agenda. The consent agenda summary, I think Bobby normally reads this, is approval of the minutes of the April twenty-five and May one, twenty twenty-three meetings. A budget amendment for Rodanthe Bulkhead Project, Public Works Fuel Maintenance and Repair, Avon Property Owners Association, Fourth of July, twenty twenty-three fireworks display, quick claim deed for forty-eight, nine forty-four NC Highway twelve, parcel zero two, six, five, one, one, zero, zero, zero in Buxton Harbor. Water Department, North Carolina Division of Water Resources, Resources Local Water Supply Resolution. Water Department, NC Division of Water Resources Water Shortage Response Plan Resolution. East Albemarle Region Library Agreement, Budget Amendment for Equipment Leases, Grant Application for Oregon Inlet Construction Administrative, Administration Services, Grant Application for Hatters Inlet Construction Administration Services. And Dare County Tourism Board Requests Consent Expenditure from Restricted Fund Line, Item forty-five, zero, three. Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Oh, let's see here, sixteen, seventeen. Seventeen is board appointments. Looks like we have quite a few.
We do.
Several of them.
Just follow this.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. First one is the Extratester territorial jurisdiction or ETJ District for the town of Naggs Head. Peregrine White's term expired on five twenty-one and he did not wish to be reappointed. Naggs Head recommends Gary Ferguson for appointment.
So moved.
We have a motion for Gary Ferguson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, I second.
You don't really, I don't think you really need a second, please, but we'll do it, okay. All right. That passes. Airport Authority, the Authority recommends George Henderson, Joseph Lekitis, Pete Burkhimer and David Crown over for reappointment.
Motion to reappoint, all.
Have a motion to reappoint or have a second? Okay, motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes. Dare County Waterways Commission, the Commission recommends John K. Berquist be appointed to fill a vacancy.
Move to appoint Mr. Berquist.
Have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passes. Roanoke Island Community Center, Jeanique Lee, Betty Selby and Clarence Lewis are recommended for reappointment.
Motion to reappoint, all.
Have a motion to reappoint, do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes. Gaming Wildlife Commission, Kyle Perry, Missy McPherson, Robert Owens and George Henderson are recommended for reappointment.
Move to reappoint, Mr. Vice Chair.
Have a motion to reappoint. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Ayes have it. Hatters Community Center, George Banks, Dennis Robinson and Jeff Oden would like to be reappointed for another two-year term.
Report them all.
Motion to reappoint, do we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Dare County Transportation Advisory Board, Jenna Wiener, new director of the Thomas A. Baum Senior Center, is recommended to fill the vacancy of retired Brandy Bohannon. Lorenzo Foster is removed for non-attendance. Chairman is supposed to appoint someone to temporarily replace Commissioner Tobin as this board risks loss of funding without improved attendance. Jim?
Yep, Jim?
Yes.
You there?
I'm here.
I just read this off this paper. Do you want to step away from that board?
I, I, I need to temporarily stay away from the board, yes. I can't do board appointments right now because of my chemo treatments.
Got you, okay.
What would be your recommendation?
Any one of you. You, Danny.
That's a loaded question.
Where, where does this, where does this board meet, Jim? Physically, what location?
In, in Manio.
In Manio.
I think we have basically four appointments to be made, four openings, I think, on that board. Jenna Wiener is, is one from the government sector who we're talking about. Somebody needs to raise their hand. Danny, did you raise, did I see you raise your hand?
No, sir, you did not.
I did not.
But I'll take one, I'll, I'm happy to, I'm happy.
That's a long haul for you, Danny.
Yeah, I'll, I'll take, I'll take it.
Okay, all right. Then what we'll do?
I'll make a motion that we appoint Jenna Wiener as the new direct, or as older adult services member and Steve House to temporarily stand in for Commissioner Tobin so that we don't have an attendance issue with that board.
Second.
We also have two additional vacancies on that board.
I don't, I don't see any names.
They're, they're waiting on those. Their problem is their funding is determined by their attendance. Since attendance has been low, they've been threatened to lose some funding.
So they've got to find members who will attend.
So.
That's what that means.
There were, there were two people who, whose applications were on there, Maggie May and a Joe A. Wilson-Hart.
Council has not recommended them for appointment. I'm required to provide you with all applications on file.
Okay, all right, then we have a motion to appoint Jenna Wiener and to appoint Steve House as a temporary replacement for Commissioner Tobin. We have a motion on that?
I just did.
I second.
Got a second? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes. And I think that's all that's on the list. Nope, sorry. Upcoming board appointments and committee appointments, we have in July, the Eastlake Community Center Board with one term expiring, Juan Cheese Community Center Board, five terms expiring. In August, we have ABC Board, two terms expiring. Jury Commission, one term expiring. And Virginia S. Tillot Community Center Advisory Board, five terms expiring. In September, we have a Health and Human Services Board with two terms expiring. And that will be your agenda. We have. We did fourteen, did that. Okay, now we're down to Commissioners' business and Managed Attorneys' business. Start that out with Commissioner Ross.
Is you called upon me there, Mr. Vice Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Fortunately, I am prepared and ready to go.
Thank you.
Good thing.
Number one, there's nobody here. I was just gonna welcome everyone on their, ah, there we go, we have more people. On the return trip from our brief Saskatchewan summer, we momentarily relocated Dare County to Saskatchewan, Mary Helen, but the climate has improved on our return here to the Outer Banks. Sixty-two degrees, twenty mile an hour winds, overcast and drizzle. Yeah, I'm with Danny. We wouldn't have a tourism problem. We'd have nobody here. That's just one, so thank you, weather. Over the weekend, Naggs Head Lynx Ladies sponsored their annual Drive for the Cure, which raises funds for local breast cancer citizens who need it here in Dare County. I don't know their fund number, but they have in the past raised in excess of forty thousand dollars annually. From the turnout and activity I saw, it appeared to be another forty thousand plus this year. And I just want to congratulate the leaders there at the Lynx Ladies and the incredible charitable work they do every year through this golf tournament. Hundred twenty-five women golfers, no men. We were the volunteers. So, well done, ladies. I recently did a short radio announcement for OBX Hotline, which in essence, in essence, calls for vocal, physical and clear support for OBX men who support safe relationships. The hotline deals with victims of domestic abuse and other forms of physical abuse. And the leadership there reached out to me recently and I was more than happy to do this small gesture on the radio announcement and basically let them know I continue to vocally and publicly support the mission they have. Uh-oh, Saturday was a big day and Dorothy, you were kind enough to send Amber and Caitlin over at the Virginia Tillot Center. We launched the twenty twenty-three team from Dare County Special Olympics Competition in Raleigh. We sent thirty-five athletes and chaperones, that's right, swimming, track, bowling and basketball, both competition and drills. And we want to wish our athletes the very best as they continue to show Dare County proud. We've already commented, the two A, section two A girls state champion soccer team, we better have something good on, in the July meeting for these ladies. They brought us, us being Dare County, a tremendous honor here, so hats off to them. Congratulations. If you haven't been lately, I had a chance over the weekend to visit our aquarium with my grandkids. My goodness, it is a fantastic visit, a great facility. They've done so many, so many neat upgrades. I haven't been there in a couple of years and I was very, very impressed. So North Carolina Aquarium's well done, the, the staff there in handling the visitors, well done. And I would encourage all of us to visit it frequently. It is a great experience.
Is it still under appointment only?
Well, that's what they said, but my visual of the people there, I gotta believe there were people that didn't have appointments and they were allowed in. We made an appointment and a time, but there was a lot of people.
They're moving them through.
Yeah, they're waving them through.
If they have some space, they will, but their plan is when they're booked up, it's appointment only and that's, they, they say that they are able to provide a better guest experience.
It, it, that's true, because in some parts of the exhibit, it got pretty crowded. It wasn't real bad, but you could tell your experience was compromised a bit by too many people in a couple of junctures. But the Sea Turtle Rehab area, oh, it's a must-see. That's all I have. Mr. Vice Chairman?
Thank you, Commissioner Ross, Commissioner House.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Couple of things, the Mid-Atlantic Fisheries Management Council is meeting June sixth through the June eighth in Virginia Beach. And they have quite a few things on their agenda. As, as you well know, the Mid-Atlantic Fisheries Management is federal level fishing all offshore. I'll be listening on that, see if anything comes up that we need to be really made aware of and what's going on with that. Again, I like to, like everyone else, congratulations to the Manio Women Two A Soccer State Championships. That is phenomenal and I'm, I'm really glad that they were able to do that. And to back up on Commissioner Ross is about the Special Olympics this past weekend in Raleigh. Dare County has brought back three gold medals, two silvers, two bronzes, one fourth place ribbon and one fifth place ribbon.
Fantastic, I hadn't seen the results.
That is, that is all.
Commissioner House, that's great.
And the one thing about the Special Olympics, their motto, I think, is not only a good motto for them, but it's a good motto for everybody. Let me win, but if I can't win, let me be brave in the attempt. That is a huge motto. So with that, I wish we had a pet of the week, but I don't think we have one up this week.
No. Not yet.
Let me just say, the send-off party for our athletes on Saturday was spectacular, was it not?
Yeah.
We posted that on our website.
Did very, very well on social media, the Caitlin's post about the Special Olympics.
Fantastic, yeah.
A lot of people were excited about it and liked it, yeah.
Yeah.
But no, no pet, it's probably almost ready now, but I don't have it.
So anyway, please go to the SPCA and look at what's available. Our Day in History, it was brought up earlier in our prayer. And it's an event that probably changed a little bit of the course of American history. Because this person was a presidential candidate and was showing very favorable response. Was one of the, the leading guys that, that thought would, would become president.
That's RFK, right?
And that was Robert Kennedy.
Yeah.
And he passed away in nineteen sixty-eight in Los Angeles at a, at a celebration party for him winning the, the California primary.
Jack Ruby, wasn't it?
No.
Who shot it?
It's our hand.
It's our hand, that's right.
Ruby was dead, okay.
Ruby was part of the ones that did the devil. So that's our Day in History and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, Commissioner Bateman.
Yes, sir. On the twenty-seventh of May, I had the opportunity to go to the Eastlake Community Center to celebrate the one-hundredth birthday of Minnie Sproul. And what makes this young lady so interesting is not only she made a hundred, she made it to be a hundred years old. At ninety-seven, she was still splitting her own wood. One tough dare, I'm serious.
No, come on.
Yes, yes, sir, Ray. I know for a fact, her granddaughter works with me and is a super individual and tough as nails. And I got time to talk to her and she's just a sweet lady, so that's all I have. Thank you.
Commissioner Couch?
Yes, sir, thank you. I've got a couple of things. Talking about Special Olympics, I attended the celebration of a major convenience store coming up, up in Kill Devil Hills, and they gave a nice contribution to Special Olympics and it was very exciting. It was a beautiful day, that's the one day we've had some decent weather. But I'm very happy that the local community stepped up here for our Special Olympic athletes. Second thing, I know everybody's aware, fully aware, that this is graduation week coming up here. We've got three high schools where they're gonna be, this will be the last time a lot of those guys will be together. Went to the baccalaureate celebration last night at Family Life Center in Buxton, across the street from the secondary school, very special, very loving, very family-like in there. Had two really good speakers, ninety-two, ninety-two-year-old man Dewey Parr. Gave him some encouraging words about getting out in the real world and gave him what is called a sea bean. And these are things we look for on the beaches. They actually, sea beans are mahogany nuts that fall off and fall into the rivers coming off of West Africa and they end up in the trade routes and then fall into the Gulf Stream. And because we stick so far out, we're, depending on which coastal scientist you talk to, we're three hundred and five miles east of Jacksonville, Florida. So when the Gulf Stream touches the edge of the, our coast here, we get a lot of these sea beans. And Dewey had given out something, he had a business for about twenty-five years and that was his shtick. He gave out about five thousand of those over that twenty-five-year period. But he gave every one of the kids a sea bean. And so that when they're out in the world and they get the stress, when they find out what it's like to be adults, to go ahead and rub that sea bean, because the more you rub it, the shinier it gets. And that was the analogy he made, was rub your bean and know that there's a light in the world for you. And I think it was, it was, well, it was a reference to the Cape Hatters Lighthouse. So I know some of you are gonna be attending the graduations this week. We've got a great group of graduating seniors, the, in Dare County, the whole thing with the Manio girls there, two A, that, I mean, Wheatmore, those, they're not used to losing. And that was by pure will. Our kids were underdogs and then by, by pure will, they, they, they won that game. They deserve every accolade they get because, yes, they were undefeated. But when it comes up to that last game, they were not the favorite. And they traveled all the way to Greensboro and got the job done, so hats off to the Redskins. Finally, twenty twenty-eight is gonna be the hundred and twenty-fifth anniversary of the Wright Brothers, First Flight Society here on the Outer Banks. We are already in talks with several stakeholders in the Dayton area. It's not gonna be anything along the lines, thank goodness, of what we went to with the Sesquicentennial of, or excuse me, the Centennial Flight in two thousand, two thousand and three. But we already have a plan in place. You're gonna see state of Indiana where Wilbur Wright was born. You're gonna see the state of Ohio, which brought up the Wright Brothers. You're gonna see the state of Virginia, which they had to travel through to get here participating. And then, of course, the state where it really matters when it comes to the Wright Brothers, North Carolina. And here in Dare County, we're gonna have, this is where they were educated in Ohio, but they flew here. That's why we're gonna be inseparable with this, with these four states going forward. But I've got a resolution here I would like to read. Let me just back up, that is gonna be called the Wright Route. The four states here, the right route, the right trail. And the impetus on this Wright Route, Wright Route will be to celebrate the accomplishments of the Wright family with their father Milton Wright and then their mother Susan Kerner Wright, who they got all their mechanical aptitude from. And then, of course, the other kids, Ruschlin Lauren and particularly somebody who is recognized but doesn't always get the recognition with the success of the Wrights. Because she was their business manager earlier on. the recognition with the success of the Wrights, because she was their business manager earlier on. She handled the Wright Cycle Company while Wilbur was over in France, and Orville had a very bad wreck, came down from seventy-five feet in the air and it maimed him for life. There was a, his co-passenger was killed, so Catherine Wright was the glue that held them together. Now, National Aviation Day is coming up in a little over two and a half months, and First Flight Society has asked me to put forth to this board, looking for an endorsement, a resolution honoring Catherine Wright, and Vice Chair, if you'll allow me, I'd like to read it. This is a resolution honoring Catherine Wright and recognizing her birthday to be co-celebrated on National Aviation Day in Dare County. Whereas National Aviation Day, August nineteenth, is United States National Observation that celebrates the development of aviation, and whereas the holiday was established in nineteen thirty-nine by President Franklin Delano Roosevelt, who issued a presidential proclamation that designated the anniversary of Orville Wright's birthday to be National Aviation Day, and whereas Catherine Wright was the younger sister of aviation pioneers Wilbur and Orville Wright and shared the same August nineteenth birthdate as her brother Orville Wright. And whereas the devoted sister Catherine Wright played an immense role in her brother's endeavors that has been generally understood and acknowledged outside of the Wright family and certain Wright biographers. And whereas Catherine Wright's strong character, unwavering support, practical advice, and business acumen during the brothers' experiments and travels enabled her exceptional management skills of communications, writing, and providing support for their test flight operations. And whereas successful endeavors achieved in the indomitable American spirit of ingenuity sometimes overlooks the invaluable contributions of individuals and entities for the greater good. And whereas the First Flight Society, generally recognized as North Carolina's oldest nonprofit organization, fosters and promotes public awareness of and widespread interest in the origin, history, and future of flight in all its forms, and to memorialize Orville and Wilbur Wright, first in the world to successfully achieve powered flight in a heavier-than-air machine, and therefore be it resolved that the Dare County Board of Commissioners, proudly acknowledging that the Wright Brothers and their sister Catherine taught the world how to fly on our windswept sands here at Kitty Hawk, heartily endorses and strongly urges the state legislatures of Ohio and North Carolina to celebrate the contributions of Catherine Wright to powered flight on National Aviation Day, and therefore be it further resolved that the General Assembly of the great state of North Carolina begin in earnest, support, and initiative for the hundred and twenty-fifth anniversary in twenty twenty-eight of Wilbur, Orville, and Catherine Wright's legacy as pioneers of powered flight. This the fifth day of June twenty twenty-three.
Motion to adopt.
Have a motion on the floor to adopt, do we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all in, any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you.
That's all I have, thank you. Commissioner Tobin?
Yes, sir. First, I'd like to just say that the channel coming out of Oregon Inlet and the connect, little connector channel that we pushed so hard to dig on the inside instead of using the old channel right at the bridge, has held up fantastically over this, all these northeast winds and stuff. It's keeping its depth, the width is fine, both ends are shoaling in a little bit, but it's still very, very accessible. And the bar is amazing, it's, it's the best it's ever been. And just really, really proud of the Miss Katie and what she's getting done and looking forward to what she can do in the future. And with that said, I'd just like to kind of give you guys an update on my health. I went to the chemo doctor, the oncologist up in, at Duke last week, and they did CT scans to see how my new chemo treatment's working. And I'm very, very, very happy to report that all of my tumors have been reduced by about forty percent. And they are continuing with this same chemo routine now for the next three months. So every, every two weeks, I get to go through a little bit of help, but the results are good, and I'd really like to give a shout out to all the churches and all the people and all my friends that have been saying prayers for me, it's, it seems to be working. And that's all I've got.
Awesome, thank you, Jim, great news.
That's great news.
Great to hear about it.
You still have all of our prayers.
Absolutely.
Well, thank you.
I'd just like to mention, congratulations to Julie for her twenty years of service, thank you so much, and for our employees of the month, Dustin Peel in June and Carly in May. Thank you, guys, appreciate it. And Dustin's still here working, told you he worked, it's really hard.
That's dedication. I know, he comes about that van, and it's not even his job, it's business.
He's still doing it. Public information, Dorothy?
Couple of things, I was really interested in the Bright Speed presentation. That's one of the things that concerns me most is when I know that folks are on Hatteras Island without the ability to call nine-one-one, so I'm glad to hear, I thought he did a good job. And, yeah, so wanted to mention that. And then, Danny, you mentioned Aviation Day, and we usually, you usually have a booth there, and we will have a booth there. We're planning to do a booth there again this year. We're putting together Dare County booths at a number of farmers markets this year, because there is a pretty good.
Oh, yeah.
Following for local people that attend that. So we're putting a schedule together, and I think Caitlin's going to call it Lemonade with the Commissioner or something, but we're going to reach out to you all and ask you all to sign up for slots to help. There'll be staff there as well, but I think it's a good opportunity for you all. So you'll be seeing that schedule come out in the next week or so, and it's all over the county where they're, where they're offered. So, so keep an eye out for that in your email.
Every Tuesday at, in Avon, so.
Yeah, we, we have Avon on there, we're really just doing each one one time, and kind of, there's a new one over in Nag's Head at the event site. So we're, we're putting it together, and then Dowdy, Kill Devil Hills has one, so there's a number of places. We're not going to start out, we're going to try to do each one once, but I hope you all can participate in that. That's something new that we're doing for outreach this year.
Thanks, Dorothy, thanks, Dorothy. Dave?
No, sir.
Anything else? All right, we have a motion to adjourn.
Salute.
Have a motion, have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
So soon? Okay.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
We are adjourned.
So soon, that's funny.
Have a good week, Jim.